Palacios, Tomás Ada, Toni Ada, Tai Tegui, Espaldón, Blas, Rispicio. Uno, dos, tres, cuatro, cinco, seis, siete, ocho, nueve, diez. Iminet Tentona, Lejos Letran Guahan is called to order. I'd like to ask if Senator Toni Ada, you can lead us in the prayer.
Good morning, Madam Speaker.
Very nice.
Lord, in thy name we have assembled and in thy name we desire to proceed in all our doings. Grant that this body may so subdue every discordant passion with us. So harmonize and enrich our hearts with thy own love and goodness that this legislative body at this time may humbly reflect that order and beauty which reign forever. Amen.
Senator Palacios, can you lead us in the recitation of Inifresi?
Inifresi, giri ni mastakilu gi hidasuku, imastakalum gi kurasonku, jan imasfigu na ninachniyahu, ufrisin maissadu para baihu protehi, jan hu defendi ihinengi, i kuttura, ilinguahi, i ari, i hanum, jan itanuchamuru. Ni irinshoku diretsu gini naazuustata, esti u afitma gi hilui Biblia jan ibandirahu bandiran Guahan.
Thank you very much, and Senator Tai Tegui, if you can lead us in the fanogi chamoru, and then Senator Guthertz in the National Anthem.
(Singing) Chamoru, uhru itanocha, kantay ratunani, toru hi luka. Hara i ora, hara i gloria, aviva i isma se parah. Hara i ora, hara i gloria, aviva i isma se parah. Toru hi tembuhi mas, hara hita, tanhir milanid, na vende icho. Ko chay pili ru, na fassafuha, tuz protehi isman guan. Ko chay pili ru, na fassafuha, tuz protehi isman guan.
Oh, say, can you see, by the dawn early light, was so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we ward were so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you very much, Senators. I'd like to ask the Clerk if you could take roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Senator Toni Ada.
Good morning.
Senator Uggan.
Senator Blas.
Senator Calvo. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldón. Senator Guthertz. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Rispicio. Senator Tai Tegui. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampit.
Present.
Madam Speaker, I would like to report there is a quorum.
Thank you very much. Senator Rispicio.
Morning, Madam Speaker. Good morning, colleagues. Madam Speaker, before I go on to approve of the Legislative Journal, I move that Vice Speaker Cruz be excused from session. He should be on his way back to Guam from visiting his mother. We all know her condition is-
On that motion, then, without any objections, so ordered.
And also, Senator Calvo, he's on island, but he probably will be joining us shortly.
On that motion, also, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that we approve the Legislative Journal dated 6/29/2010 to 7/2/2010.
On that motion, no objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are communications and petitions, and I move that they be appended to today's Session Journal.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
There are messages from Imagala in Guahan, and I move the same.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are reports of standing committees, and I move that these reports be appended to today's Session Journal.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
And there are no reports of select committees. And so on the introduction of first reading of bills and resolutions, I move that Bill 436-30 to Bill 444-30, Resolution 415-30 to 417-30 be given its first reading.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, not that I'm aware, but could you please ask our colleagues if they have any intent to move for any overrides? I ask for maybe a couple of seconds.
Senator Guthertz, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker.
Senator Guthertz, on a motion?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I would like to move, notwithstanding the objections of the Governor, for an override vetoed Bill 359-30, which would add a new sections A, B, and C to Section 76212 of Article 2, Chapter 76 of Title 21 Guam Code Annotated, relative to prohibiting the transfer of all prehistoric and historic properties, antiquities, and objects owned by the people of Guam or in the inventory of the government of Guam without legislative concurrence.
Notwithstanding, then, the objections of Imagala in Guahan on vetoed Bill Number 359-30 and Act 2, and I guess again, which is really relative to prohibiting the transfer of all prehistoric and historic properties, antiquities, and objects owned by the people of Guam or in the inventory of the government of Guam without legislative concurrence, a motion is to place vetoed Bill Number 359 on the voting file for an override. Are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Senator Rispicio, you may continue.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Under legislative concurrence, I move that Mr. Wilfred Affleckui, on the recommendation from Senator Frank Uggan Jr.'s Committee on Health to serve as Director of Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse, I move that that be put in the voting file.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
My next motion, Madam Speaker, is our customary general motion that any bill, any resolutions, or certificates of condolence or commendation in nature that's introduced during the course of this session be automatically adopted, that every senator be a co-sponsor, and that the legal counsel and the clerk work with the author in the preparations of these certificates or resolutions. Not bills.
Resolutions and certificates. On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My next motion, also customary, we have 18 bills on the agenda, six of which of committee reports have been filed. But as a matter of being expedient, these bills are on the agenda, and the motion is that if in the event we get to the bill and that either the sponsor or the committee report has yet to be filed or the additional time is needed, that that bill would be set aside, does not lose its place, and that as soon as the author advises you, Madam Speaker, then they would go back to that particular bill.
On that motion, without any objections, and so ordered.
I don't have any other motions at this time. Thank you.
Can we take a minute recess? The legislature is back in session. I recognize the Majority Leader, Senator Rispicio.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we revert back to motions.
On that motion, then, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Senators, this motion is going to take place, and it's important that you listen.
Probably it's better if they don't listen, so we just get things done faster. So I'm indifferent either way. Madam Speaker, I understand that you were in receipt of a request by our appropriations chairman requesting for a waiver of a public hearing and an emergency declaration on the bill that Speaker Panglinen introduced. It's an act to address the payment of the promissory note between the Guam Department of Education and the Guam Power Authority in fiscal year 2010, and I ask for your disposition at this time.
Thank you very much, Senator Rispicio. And yes, in light of that emergency situation which we've heard, and we know that GPA has given an extension until today, as a matter of fact, to provide an opportunity for a DOE to make good on its past due payments for power. So after careful evaluation for the request to waive the requirements for a public hearing on Bill 444-30, I certify pursuant to 2 GCA, Section 2103A, that an emergency condition exists and that the requirements for a public hearing on Bill Number 444-30 COR is accordingly waived. I have Bill Number 444-30, and I recognize Senator Panglinen.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I'm sure the author thanks you as well.
This is my say, Madam Speaker.
So given that emergency declaration, given that this bill is qualified
Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 444-30 COR be placed
for placement on the session agenda, I move that Bill 444-30
in the third reading file, and I'd like to briefly discuss it.
be put at the top of the second reading file.
Be accepted first, because it wasn't part of the original. On that motion, then, without any objections, so ordered.
And I move that we resume back to the second reading file. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So- Thank you very much. Then we're going to take also another brief recess.
Be accepted.
So on that motion, without any objection, yeah, it is placed already in the second reading, so ordered. And a motion to place in the third reading?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. First of all, Madam Speaker, I want to thank you for reviewing the matter and my request on the urgency of this, given the position that's been taken. And unfortunately, the positions being taken are, in some instances, bureaucratic, and we have to untangle that bureaucratic position with regards to the payment of this note that DOE has with GPA, and it is tied to the current operational requirements of the Guam Department of Education with regards to electrical service, that even though they remain current in their current year's consumption, because of the non-payment of this note, and we're still trying to verify for either one or two months that they're threatening to shut off power to DOE, which will impact, of course, the opening of the school. And I want to thank you for recognizing the urgency of this and allowing it to be placed on the agenda today. The issue here at hand, Madam Speaker, is that, as we know, there is approximately $7 million note remaining, I mean, $7 million balance remaining on past due power bills owed by the Department of Education to the Guam Power Authority. In this fiscal year, since the beginning of the year, the Guam Department of Education has been making $200,000 monthly payments as required in the note. And they've been able to do that, from what we've been able to gather all the way up to about May or June, I thought it was all the way up to June and July of this year, from their current appropriation level. They've been able to look at the requirements of the operations of the Guam Department of Education, and have been able to, from their current levels of appropriation, pay that $200,000 note. The snag has come about because the determination by, and I'm not even sure who's determined it, whether it's DOA or DOE, but what the bottom line is, they're saying now that the Department of Education will not be allowed to use current year revenues, I mean appropriations, so what that means is, there's going to be about a 6% reduction in the power bill in these months. And so when we look at the current consumption within DOE, as well as the current consumption, I mean, consumption within the utility pool, that 6% would result in a reduction of approximately $170,000 for the next two months in this fiscal year. So what we're doing is, we're taking that savings and appropriating it to DOE, to Guam Department of Education, to use towards payment of this note, and then allowing the Superintendent to reprogram the note, to use what they've been able to, to their current authorization level and appropriations, to pay for the remaining balance of that. And that could either be, again, we're trying to verify the exact number, but it could be either another $400,000 or even as low as $230,000. In addition to that, Madam Speaker, what we are doing is that this promissory note would be transferred, in terms of making the payments, beginning October of 2011, that the responsibility for making these payments would go to the Department of Administration, and in the budget bill, we will then appropriate the money and account for this additional money out of DOE, so that we separate this past due obligation, or this note, and obligation on this debt and payment, which is a general fund obligation, because the DOE funds are all general funds, for this purpose, and allow DOA to make those payments and require them to make those payments. And then DOE would continue to be responsible for, through the appropriation level, for their department, for the current consumption requirement, required payments of their current year's consumption of electricity in that too, so that we would, we would separate the two, really, and not tie that, so that there can be a cleaner break on this thing, and falling behind on the promissory note is not going to threaten school operations, as long as they remain current on the school operations side. And we hope that GPA would realize this. You know, Madam Speaker, when we have to do these things because GPA is acting in this manner, you know, I just want to point out for, you know, for a fact that even though GPA says we're independent, we pay, we do our own revenues, we're not subsidized by the general fund, and therefore, you got to pay, you know, the government, just like any other entity, has to meet its obligations. And we agree, and to, to the greatest extent possible, we all endeavor to do that. But we also almost realize that this is all a government, you know, entity, and while we're trying to do that, GPA may be in a position to say, "Look, while you work it out, we understand there's all intentions to work it out, we've been able to do so." You know, and instead of saying, "The day before school opens, if you don't pay us today, we're going to cut you off," you know, rather than saying, "Look, we realize school's going to open tomorrow, we know that the wheels are in place to meet this obligation, we know that DOE has been making the payments when nobody questioned the authority to do so." And so, we understand, we'll work with you, but, you know, to come in here and just, or, you know, call up DOE and saying, "If you don't do it, we're going to cut your power," which threatens the opening of the schools. I just don't think that that's, you know, even a good neighbor policy, you might want to say. Because this body and this government has responded to GPA and GWA when they've needed the general fund. I mean, just this last couple of months, for example, you know, Guam Water Works Authority needed to do a $30 million loan, and they, you know, they're saying, "Oh, we're independent, we're going to pay it on our own," and then the condition is, "We don't believe so." And the only way we'll give you a loan is if the general fund and the government of Guam gives its full faith and credit guarantee that it'll make the payment in case you don't. You know, and what did we do? We said, "We realize that GWA, you know, tries to generate the revenues on its own, makes its payments, meets its obligation, but without this, you're not going to be able to get that $30 million loan, which impacts the ability to get another $100 million loan for more upgrades to the utility agency." And what did this government, this legislative body, this administration with the governor, you know, when we introduced the bill, it passed, we put the full faith and credit of the government, they're able to get their $30 million loan, now they're moving forward on getting the $110 million additional issue in infrastructure bonds, and it's because we've cooperated. And yet, you know, these guys, when it push comes to shove, they're saying, "If you don't pay your bill today, right now, before school opens tomorrow, we're going to cut you off." What, I mean, where is the reciprocal, you know, nature that comes with making, you know, this government responding to its time of need? And we've done the same for GPA. GPA had to get a loan, and we had to pledge the full faith and credit of the government of Guam, so that GPA can go and get a loan. Without it, GPA would not be able to do that. And we are tying up our ability to go out and get other loans that may able to, be able to support the general fund, because we're tying up our borrowing capacity by pledging the full faith and credit to that GPA note, or, you know, and so forth. So here is this government bending over backwards, accommodating GPA, so that they can meet their obligations, they can implement their plans, which are all good and we're all supportive of, and yet, when we need them to just say, "Look, we won't threaten to cut you off today if you don't pay and threaten school tomorrow, because, look, when we needed you, you came, and this government pledged its full faith and credit, the legislature approved it, the governor signed it into law, and now we're, we're able to go out and do the things we need to do to provide you reliable power." And we said, "That is a good thing. It is worth it to this government, this island, this, you know, and our community, to tie up the government's ability to get loans for operational requirements, so that GPA will have the ability in the financial markets to move forward with their plans." You know, but, and then, this is the repayment we kind of get, you know. It's, it's like almost a slap in the face sometimes. And it's not they're saying, "We don't want to pay." It's not like the administration is saying, "We're not going to pay that bill," as has happened in the past, when it just says, "Just don't pay the bill." No, everybody's saying, "We recognize we need to make the payment, we've been making the payments." There's now been a ruling, and these individuals that are making this ruling are also doing it because they feel that it is their duty and responsibility, the way the law is written, that this is their interpretation. And if we couldn't, the administration couldn't get them to change their mind, to say, "No, this is the interpretation, we feel it is supportable and defensible, and so release the authority to pay, or release the money to make that payment, so that DOE can cut a check. Don't bounce the check when they cut it." That's really what they threaten to do. If DOE wrote a $200,000 check to, to GPA for the purpose of paying this note, that they would bounce the check, they would not honor the check. They would tell the bank, "This check's no good, there's no authority to do so." That's really where we're at on this thing. And the governor, at this time, has not been able to gather all the people around him and say, "No, that's not the ruling. We believe that this is a current year obligation and can be paid out of current year revenues." So what this does is, you know, it puts all of that aside and say, "All right, because of the critical nature, because GPA, you know, is insistent on this, even though we've been making these payments, and we're a little behind now because of that snafu, or that snag, or glitch, we're going to put into statute this authority, so that it's not questionable, and the payments can proceed and be made. And because we're going to realize a little bit more savings with the LEAC adjustment, that we would do so." So I want to make just a couple of amendments, Madam Speaker. And again, this is because we were trying to confirm it. We thought, when we looked at the numbers under the Office of Finance and Budget, that the, that there were only two remaining months to be paid, August and September. Now, my further information has revealed that it may be that June and July also remain unpaid. So rather than, on Section 4 of the bill, on Page 3, rather than putting in the $230,000, what we're going to, I would like to make that amendment, that would remove, after the word, on pit line 20, after the word "funds," in the amount not to exceed $230,000, would strike that out, so that section would read, "The Superintendent of the Guam Department of Education has authorized to transfer, reallocate, direct, or redirect any current GDOE FY 2010 operating funds for the purpose of payment of the promissory note cited in Section 2." So it would just remove that, so that, but it still, of course, caps it to what is owed on that note for the redirection. So that would be my first amendment, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered.
The second, Madam Speaker, is, I'd like to make a motion to add yourself a second co-sponsor. We filed this bill very early this morning. I know we've been discussing, our office has been discussing with you on the urgency of this matter, and we've been working to it, but I apologize for not finding you this morning and wanting to get it on the agenda.
On that motion, without objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much.
One moment. Can you please look on Page 2, Line 17 and 18?
Okay. Yes, and, okay. And again, that would be, place a period after budget.
Yes.
And so it would be the remaining balance of the note shall be addressed to the director, to the Superintendent of the Department of Education, in the current DOE operating budget. Just put a period after that, delete everything after that.
Okay. On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, and this is Massey, Madam Speaker, for your indulgence.
Thank you very much, Senator Panglinen. On the motion, then, to place on the third reading file, without any objections, so ordered. I was just going to ask the Chairman next. A motion, then, to go down to the voting file, so we can vote on this and send it up to the Governor's Office.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I'd like to then move that, based upon the declaration of the critical nature and the timely requirement for action by the legislative body on this bill, that we then move down to the voting file, vote on Bill 444 as amended, without engrossment, so that we can get this before the Governor.
On that motion, then, without any objections, so ordered. We are now, then, on the voting file. I'd like to ask the Clerk to please read Bill Number 444-30, as amended.
Bill Number 444COR, introduced by V.C. Panglinen. An act to address the payment of the promissory note between the Guam Department of Education and the Guam Power Authority in fiscal year 2010.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator V.A. Ada.
Yes.
Senator Ogun. Senator Blas. Senator Cavill. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Guthertz.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Rispio. Senator Tiedegui. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
Yes. Senator Panglinen, can I make a motion to excuse two members?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that we excuse Senator Rispio and Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz on the vote on this.
Thank you very much. On that motion, without any objections, so ordered. The vote hasn't been called yet, and Senator, I mean, I haven't read the votes yet, so Senator Rispio, we are still on voting for Bill 444, and since you've returned, would you like to register your vote?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Bill Number 444 received 14 yeas and one excused absence. Bill Number 444 is duly passed by this body. A motion, please, to go back to second reading. Senator Rispio, we have voted.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we proceed to the voting file.
No, proceed back up to...
I'm sorry, proceed to the, to the second reading file.
Thank you very much. On that motion, then, without objections, so ordered. We are on the second reading file, and the next bill that we have is Bill Number 32. And we pull out the author. I'd recognize Senator Cavill.
Good morning, Madam Speaker, and again, thank you for recognizing me. I want to move to place Bill Number 32COR into the third reading file. And if you'll allow me to speak on the bill?
You may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this bill has been long in the making. This was introduced in an earlier legislature, and of course, it has been moved through to this session, to this legislature. But it all goes back into a desire by a property owner of Guam, not a rich man, but a small businessman, looking to utilize his property for the benefits of not only him and his family, but the community. What Bill 32 would do, would be to rezone a property from a single-family residential R1 to commercial C-zone, for, again, maximizing its potential in use, which would be to open a laundromat to serve the neighborhood. Madam Speaker, this bill, from its very inception, had the support of the community. It had the support of the mayors, as well as the municipal council. There was, of course, some issues brought forth by, and a complaint by some individuals that were neighbors, dealing more not of the laundromat and its utility and purpose for the neighborhood, but the potential, especially with the commercial zoning designation, for alcohol sales. And in particular, because of some of the problems that were occurring at the Hafadeh Market, which was not, not more than 750 feet away from the premises. The original concern of land management and the original protestation, and why they were not in line with moving forward with this, was particular to that testimony. Of course, the Department of Land Management, more recently, had put forward a amended statement in reference to Bill 32, and if I could read it, it was basically, of course, this is, I quote, from Carlos Antilon, Chief Planner, referenced Bill 32, that "We will have no objections, provided that a restriction be included, and that restriction shall be that no liquor license shall be issued." And of course, they go ahead to explain that at the time this request was submitted to the GLUC as a conditional use permit, the request was denied because of the overriding objections from the surrounding neighborhood, was that the retail operation of the activity had the potential to sell alcoholic beverages, and that the neighbors did not want to see repeated... repeated action of what is now occurring with the current operations of Laddi Heights Mart, just 750 feet from the project. So again, that issue was not on the utility and the use for a laundromat, but, of course, for sale of alcohol. And again, as we move forward in this, and as the process moves forward as well, these issues can and will be moved forward. And I have, again, I, as an author, have no problem with the issue of that and of giving certain safeguards to ensure that alcohol is not sold. I must note, as a matter of fact, but there are laws in the books that if this is a problem even going on at Hafede Market, then it's not really what the law is, but again, ensuring the enforcement of the law. There should not be individuals that are buying alcohol at a Hafede retail store or any other retail store and then leaving that premises and then being within that, the confines of those premises and its surrounding area, drinking the alcohol that they had purchased. There are laws against that as well. So again, these are issues that were, I see noteworthy, and again, it has been addressed by the Land Use Commission, excuse me, by Land Management, but then it also calls to question, this is where we need to work with our agencies that deal with public safety to ensure that the current laws in the books are followed. I will note that this property is surrounded and in that area where we do have industrial type of zoning. We are not far from the Hawaiian Rock area. We do know that this area, aside from surrounding areas that are touching on in zoning that is not only commercial but more industrial in nature, that this area will be an area of intense activity, especially as a result of the military buildup. The statements, and I'm again having discussions with Mayor Nito Blas and members of the council on why they believe that this was such of an import to this community, is even with the current population there, the closest laundromats at this point, there are two. One, at the bottom of Laddi Heights Road at Winchels in Dedido, and the other near Route ten near Ledjung Baragada. Now, Madam Speaker, again, I'm asking from you and my colleagues, support in this measure. In its very nature, again, it's about, about an individual, a small businessman and his family, making use of his properties that would maximize its use for the betterment in him and his family, then at the same time, with the passage of this legislation, it is also, and again, as iterated by the mayor, by the municipal council, and of course, even by Land Management, that it will be of benefit to the community. Madam Speaker and members of this body, I ask for your support in the passage of Bill number thirty-two. Thank you very much.
On the motion, Senator Guthers, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I have a small amendment that needs to be read right now.
So...
One second.
Well, I recognize you. I'm going to go to the next person, Senator Panglinen. You're recognized on the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I just wanted to rise, of course, you know, this bill, as was earlier articulated, has been introduced in the prior legislature, in the prior legislature, based upon the public hearing and the findings, decided not to act on it, basically disapproving it. It was reintroduced and the reason, one of the reasons why it's taken so long, it's come out of my committee, is that it was reintroduced, there was no individuals that came to testify. The landowner, the owner, who's supposed to be so interested in, you know, working, never showed up at the hearing. We've worked months and months and followed up with the author as well as the representative of the owner to provide some kind of documentation to the committee that signifies that there's a desire to move forward on this. And none of that was ever submitted to the committee until just very short, shortly, and it was because of our continued effort in terms of working with the author and the office as well as the owner of the property and their representative to put some kind of document into place. The reason why it was actually put on the floor, put on the agenda, then this body, and when we started to discuss it, said, "There's nothing here." The committee report, and, you know, and I tried to accommodate, of course, the author at that time as well as the owners, that even absent those things, we're going to depend on the author and his private communication that is not part of the public record in terms of what their intentions are, that I'm going to rely on his, to relay that to the body. But this body decided, we didn't want to do that, that we wanted to find and put on the public record in the committee report exactly what the intentions are. And that's why then the bill was actually taken off the agenda, put back into the committee. My committee, once again, you know, continually followed up with the author and the author's office, and we finally got something. And I, you know, that's why it's before us now. Now, this idea that it's for a laundromat, actually, it wasn't. Originally, it was an application for a retail store laundromat. So I want to correct the record in that respect because the bill says that they wanted to open a laundromat, but really, the record and the representations made is not a laundromat, but a retail store and a laundromat. And so I would like to make the amendment, just so that the record is clear when the bill is voted on, that it reflects that, that public document record, to open a retail store and a laundromat on line seven. And that would just, again, just to make sure that, that the body and the public is fully aware of what was being requested and by the owner as related to us from what we've been able to gather from the conversations that have occurred. I just wanted to make that amendment.
On that motion then to add the words "retail store" and on line seven, to open a retail store and laundromat. On that motion without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much. The other information I wish to point out is that there, when the Guam, when the Department of Land Management, that this application is not one of those, you know, we can't get it through the TOE, to the Guam Land Use Commission. Usually, we kind of entertain some rezonings here, and they've been divided into two kind of, two different things. One is the landowner or the property owner wants to bypass the Guam Land Use Commission. And they, and they do that by getting...
Senators, please, someone's speaking.
So there's this kind of two different, you know, rezoning requests that come to the body and get on this floor, kind of go into three, two or three different categories. One, the landowner feels that he can come to the legislature and get quicker action on it and doesn't, does not submit an application to the Guam Land Use Commission and comes directly here. And this body and members of this body have responded to the public's request, and we have seen rezoning applications that have not been presented to the Guam Land Use Commission. So strictly bypassing the Guam Land Use Commission, the regulatory agencies, the review process there, and this body has done one of two things. One, it has, in times, approved the zoning request based upon what the committees have been able to gather through the public hearing process when the hearing is conducted on that, regardless of lack of input from the regulatory agencies in the Guam Land Use process. And the body has rejected those and the body has approved those. So that's one type of rezoning request that comes to this legislative body. The second is that the request has been submitted to the Guam Land Use Commission and it's stuck. So, you know, they say it because you have to meet these requirements, it's a long drawn out process. So some landowners, because of financial commitments, other things, expiration of contracts, say that, "Look, we've got an application in there, it's been in there for six months, eight months. We need some action here because we're going to make an investment," whatever, "and we want to do it." And so the legislative body, again, and its members, respond to those kind of requests. Actually, then there's a third and a fourth that have crept up. The third request that comes to this body is that these ancestral lands that are returned to the original landowners, the ruling has been that the Guam Land Use Commission cannot or does not have the authority to rezone these properties, unzoned properties. They have the authority to zone, to rezone properties, but not provide initial zoning designations. And so this body, with the return of excess lands and ancestral lands, has seen requests coming here and we've responded, once again, to those requests. The fourth, which is this one, is that the landowner has gone through the Guam Land Use Commission, submitted an application, had the hearings, had the agency review, and they don't agree with their decision. And that's exactly what this one is. This landowner, back in 2007, according to the record, went through and submitted the rezoning application to the Guam Land Use Commission. The Guam Land Use Commission, of course, processed the application, sent it to the Subdevelopment Review Committee or the Development Review Committee, which is all of the different agencies that determine the suitability and the appropriateness of that request based upon their different mandates. So EPA would review it, GWA would review it, GPA would review it, Bureau of Planning reviews it, all of the permitting agencies would review it and see whether or not the request meets with the overall land use program in the specific area as well as, of course, the community itself. So this landowner went to the Guam Land Use Commission, had the hearings, the mayors had the public hearing in the villages because that's part of the rezoning request process, and when all of the information was gathered, it went to the Guam Land Use Commission and the Land Use Commission members voted whether or not to approve or disapprove or provide conditions on an approval. And the end result was, given all of the input from the different department and agencies as well as, of course, the general public through the public hearing process that was conducted, the Guam Land Use Commission voted to disapprove the request to rezone the property from C, I mean, from R1 to C. Now, earlier, the author made a statement that this is kind of close to Hawaiian Rock and the industrial sites. Actually, he's confused the two bills. There were two bills that kind of are in the same general area. One bill, Bill thirty-three, I believe, actually is the one that's up on Route fifteen by, next to or across the McGinnaw Golf Course, down the street from the Hawaiian Rock property. So when he says that this request is next to the industrial area, it isn't because this property is in the, across from Laddi Heights Housing Development. There are two housing developments on Carnation Road, which is the Laddi Heights Road. And so this is in the residential area along Carnation Road, up in that area and not in Route fifteen next to Hawaiian Rock. So I think the author was a little, because of the length of time from the original introduction to today, I think he just mixed up the two, the two properties that, on the two bills that he had introduced. So this bill is not the one next to Hawaiian Rock, if I, if I am correct, and I'm pretty sure I am. It is in the residential area over by Laddi Heights and I guess what's Laddi Plantation? I'm not sure what, what that subdivision is there. But it's in that residential area that, that the property is located at. So, you know, Madam Speaker, I do want to say that, you know, as the good, my good colleague mentioned, you know, this body certainly has the authority, the power, and response to requests by our constituents to act on their behalf. And we also have, I think, a power and responsibility, along with that power, to do a complete review of the record, place it all on the record and so forth. And so I wanted to articulate those pieces of information that have not been articulated as clearly as they, I feel they should have, and that's why I stand here to kind of give an explanation of where we're at on this bill, where we were and what has happened in the bill and why this bill is before this body. Not that we're going to do some initial zoning, but because the application was reviewed by the appropriate agencies and departments, it was rejected as not being consistent with the, with the desires of the neighborhood in that specific neighborhood. The mayor who lives on Route, you know, right there on Route, Route ten, you know, does not live next to this and is not going to be bothered by the additional activity that maybe occur because of that. He's, he's down here. It is from the neighbors in the area that live next to this proposed rezoning that have said, "If this should occur, this type of activity will disrupt the type of, of living environment that we have now, and we don't agree with that." And voiced it to the appropriate departments and agencies through the regular process of the rezoning. And when it came to the Guam Land Use Commission, they weighed all of the presentations and agreed with the individuals and the neighborhood that allowing this activity to occur in this would disrupt the, the environment there and disapproved the request. So thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Sidus Moss.
Thank you, Senator Panglinen. Senator Guthers, are you ready with your amendment now? Okay, so you are recognized then on the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have an amendment to Bill thirty-two. And the amendment is in response to the email we received from Carlos Antolon, the Chief Planner at the Department of Land Management. In his email to us, he stated, with reference to Bill thirty-two, "We," meaning the department, "has no objections provided that a restriction be included and that said restriction shall be that no liquor license shall be issued in connection with the rezoning of this property." And Mr. Antolon explains that this is a sentiment of the community that surrounds this particular piece of land, that they do not wash, want to see liquor and beer sold at this facility because of the impact it will have on this residential area. So my amendment is very short, Madam Speaker. It simply adds the following language to the end of the last word on line eleven of Section Two of Bill thirty-two. And the language is that, quote, "No liquor license shall be issued at any time in connection with the rezoning of this property from R-dash-one zone to commercial C-zone," unquote. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, Senator Agun, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly stand in support of this because, this particular amendment, because it was really a general sentiment that was shared during the course of the previous public hearing through the Guam Land Use Commission. The only concern I have, though, Madam Speaker, is because this will be codified in law, it does not provide flexibility for the property owner in terms of, let's say, five years, seven years, 10 years down the road, if in fact the sentiments, and this is kind of ironic because we're talking about liquor license, but if in fact the sentiments of the surrounding residents in this particular property would like to have this establishment provide such commodities or such products, or the owner would like to go through the regular process of the Land Use Commission, by codifying this, it would automatically restrict it unless they come back. by codifying this, it would automatically restrict it unless they come back to this body. And I, I think that, Madam Speaker, if the sponsor of the amendment would consider the possibility of perhaps expanding the language so that it remains as proposed, "No liquor license shall be issued at any time in connection with the rezoning of this property from R1 Zone to Commercial C Zone," unless, you know, something to the effect, unless the existing process be utilized and the general concurrence be acquired. That, that's my only concern, Madam Speaker. Whether the sponsor of the amendment would consider that is certainly up to her. But right now, this would tell me that infinitum, that there's going to be a direct restriction on the, the, I guess, the acquisition of an appropriate license in this case, if, in fact, is codified by law. And there's really, there really would not be any flexibility unless the property owner comes back to this particular body to get an amendment of the law. So that's a concern that I wanted to share. I do not have the proposed language, and I'm not too sure whether the author of this amendment would even consider that. So I proffer that as a concern from my perspective. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Agnew. Are there any other speakers on the motion? Senator Rispia, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, it's clear to me what the author of this amendment is trying to do, to conform, to accommodate some of Land Management's concerns with this particular rezoning project. But this amendment kind of implies that this legislative body is the body that approves liquor licenses. And so while I'm inclined to understand where the mover is coming from, I'm not inclined to support it, because this body should set those zoning parameters. So in this case, this property will be zoned from R1 to Commercial, and let the owner of the property go through the rigorous process of applying for an ABC license. And so having said that, Madam Speaker, I, I can support this amendment on the mere basis that it implies that this body is the one that approves the ABC licenses.
Thank you very much, Senator Rispia.
We are on the Judy Guthers Amendment and the main amendment, and I'm going to ask if the Speaker want that. You're recognized to speak on the Guthers Amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I, I, you know, our colleagues here basically know and can handpick a name, the senators here, who, you know, have very serious concerns about rezoning. And I'm glad that Senator Panglinen went through, you know, the four different ways in which, you know, members of the community can come to, to this body. I know that it was the, the wisdom of the legislature, past legislatures, who decided then that there really should be a process to, to follow, primarily because the legislature were inundated with so many requests, and then, at the same time, it becomes a political football in the legislature, and especially, you know, at times like this, prior to an election year. And I've been always a believer of following the process, and I believe that there's a reason for that as well, because it actually brings in all of the experts in our community to be able to provide some type of information that we are not privy to. When we make a decision, many times it's just to read the bill, and then we, we decide whether we're going to support it or not. The, the Land Use Commission, however, does it very differently. So they, they bring in all of the other stakeholders, and more importantly, they bring in as well family members who live within that particular area that is being considered to be rezoned. And I just ask everyone here, you know, and put yourself in, in the shoes of where you live, and if you would, in fact, be in favor then of having, you know, a, a business which would sell alcoholic beverages and, and change the whole makeup of your community. And I don't know if, if, you know, anyone here would argue then that if they decide in their own community that that's not what they want, that particular type of business, that, you know, they'll like the legislature to turn around and make a decision contrary to what, you know, the community wants. And that's exactly what is happening here. And I just feel that, Madam Speaker, is that, you know, there, there are processes that we should follow, and we should, you know, try to adhere to that, to try to support it. Otherwise, we might as well just throw it out again. I, I just feel that the amendment being proffered here by, you know, our colleague is a, a win-win. And, and initially, when, when I was reading this, I was, and, and reading, of course, the, the report and, and reading the position of the department, you know, it actually then solidified, you know, my decision in terms of how I was going to vote on this bill. With the amendment, however, it's a little bit different now. That changes, of course, the, the whole, you know, situation here. And I don't think it's unreasonable for us to even place this, they've actually had asked that, that the, that, that we consider this, very similar to what the Land Use Commission would do by actually requiring that, or rather granting a, a conditional zoning, meaning that there would be these conditions in which, you know, the owner must adhere to. Now, it, it could, of course, and I know the language has not been proffered yet, I, I noticed the, the author, I guess, when she closes, whether she wants to consider a, a, an amendment to her amendment in consideration of a concern that, you know, a, the senator from Jonah had raised. And I don't know what the language will be for that, but I just feel that when you really look very carefully, because I was trying to visualize exactly where this subject property is, and, and a concern that, that I have, and I can understand the community also feeling the same way. Because just think, about 10, 15 years ago, so much has happened to that particular community, which is the Lottie Heights Estates and the Lottie Heights Plantation, that they've been through a facial degradation of the community, and then, you know, people were moving out, and, and now people are starting to take over again their, their community, and are starting to, to clean up the place, you know, fix it up, and then more and more people are starting to move in. And, and I, I guess the residents there are thinking that, you know, by having a, a business in which alcohol then will be brought in, will then start to have individuals hanging around the, the bus stops in the facility. There's a school just down the street on the other end. And, and although there may be another part of the law in which they'll be able to go and get a license, that they really can't have a, a business there that's going to sell alcohol where there's a, a school or a church in, in the vicinity. And I've not measured, of course, the, the area, but by law, that's 500 feet. And this just tells me exactly, you know, where, where this legislature is coming from. What is our policy when it comes, you know, to activities of this nature or businesses of this nature? The legislature, past legislature, made that decision, that 500, that you can't have alcohol 500 feet, you know, within that whole, you know, area where there's a church and where there's a school. And I've tried many times since I've been in this legislature to introduce even legislations for daycare centers. And when, you know, we did some research to compare how many schools we have, how many daycare centers we have, how many churches we have, and you compare that to the number of businesses, whether it is clubs, bars, and retail stores that sell alcohol, they're 10 times more, 50, you know, even 50 times more than there are for wholesome type of, you know, activities or institutions for that matter. So, Madam Speaker, I mean, I don't know. I, I, I'm going to quickly try to make some phone calls now to find out, really, where, when GLUC had first heard this in 2007, whether, in fact, now, since there is a new school in that vicinity, now does it actually come within, you know, the, the vicinity or the parameters of that school? So on this amendment, yes, I actually do support this amendment. But now, it just, I just, it just came to my mind, and I have to actually really find out now whether it is within 500 feet of where the school, the elementary school is, up the street on Carnation Road. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Masi, Madam Speaker. On the Guthers Amendment, I'm going to go ahead and recognize Senator Palacios on the Guthers Amendment, and you can speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the Guthers Amendment. Madam Speaker, with that, that restriction, I cannot support the view as it is. The way I see this, it is already, I guess, a compromise with the Department of Land Management, that they would agree, provided, of course, that this phrase, this restriction is placed in there. Of course, I listened to the presentation by the senator from Jonah, that if we codify this, then it is there forever. But some kind of restriction, perhaps, maybe no license shall be issued 10 years from the date of enactment, things like that, but definitely some kind of restriction to that effect. But as it is right now, I rise in support of the Guthers Amendment as it is. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Masi, Senator Palacios. Speaker Ben, you're recognized on the Guthers Amendment. Anyone else wishing, please signify by raising your hand and let me know.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, I just wanted also to point out that, once we rezon without any kind of covenants or conditional restrictions, once you rezon the property from, from R1 to C, any use that is an allowable use under the zoning code would be authorized to be used. So if we, without the restriction of, we know the covenant that in this C-zone, no the allowable use of a, a, of a liquor license in a retail activity will not be allowed, that's a covenant. Even though you allow retail activity, the caveat is that the allowable liquor license sale would not be part of that allowable use. You could not deny anyone the ability to apply for and receive a liquor license if they meet all the requirements under the zoning code. So that, to say that, you know, they'll be applied for a liquor license and they'll get approved or not approved for that, it's an allowed use, and if they meet those conditions, then they have to be granted that, if we do not put this covenant or restriction or this condition on that, on that C-zone. So I just wanted to kind of point that out. Thank you.
Sisus Masi, Speaker Ben Panglinen. Are there anyone else wishing to speak? Senator Jimmy Espaldón, you're recognized. Good morning. You're recognized on the Guthers Amendment.
Good morning, Madam Speaker. Thank you. You know, I'm not really sure whether I support this or I don't, only because now we're going into some territory where I really question whether we should or not. I mean, here we are, we're debating whether we should allow a rezoning, and then, given the history by the chairman of the committee, in terms of how this rezoning process has taken place, and it went through the proper processes, and, and, in, in the long run, it basically got disapproved, based upon many factors, including the sentiments of the residents within this area. And yet, despite the disapproval, after going through the whole process, now this bill is before us to almost overturn the decision that was made through the proper process, right, through the Land Use Commission. And again, in spite of all the factors that were considered that led to the disapproval of this particular property to be rezoned from R1 to Commercial, now, we're trying to say, "Well, okay, if we do go down that road, and we do overturn the decision of the Land Use Commission in not granting the approval, and we do say, 'Okay, it's okay,' now we're setting conditions as it is." And again, I understand why we should support this, because that's exactly what the request was, and those are the concerns of the community in terms of not allowing liquor to be sold in their neighborhood. But it really opens a door for others to come before this body, who might be in the same situation down the road, and we know there are going to be all kinds of developments, development opportunities on this island. If they fail through the normal process of going to Land Use Commission, and it's not consistent with the zoning of that area, or even the, the, the environment of that area, then all of a sudden, we open the door for them to come back down here and saying, "Well, listen, even though I was turned down, we're asking you to do it." And we don't have all that information that was presented in front of the Land Use Commission to make this, to make a determination based upon all the various factors that were presented. And so I, again, I, I'm troubled by this amendment, only because now, and it's not so much the amendment itself, because I understand the full intent of this, it's really the broader ramifications, that once a person comes in here, asks for us to overturn a ruling, in essence, of the Land Use Commission, right, and then for us to then start really massaging it into a whole different format, that is problematic to me. Because then where does it stop? How much support do we really give, and how much credibility do we really give to the processes, the processes that are in place? In other words, if you want rezoning, go through the Land Use Commission. How much authority are we going to bring back to ourselves and not let the proper agencies and boards do what they're meant to do, that we have empowered into law, that we have produced? And so I don't have so much an objection to this amendment. But again, it's, now we're getting to layers and layers of micromanaging what other agencies and other departments are supposed to be, and boards are supposed to be doing. And so as a whole, there's kind of like this unfavorable, unfavorable flavor or taste in my mouth to even keep going down this road. Again, I understand the restrictions that this amendment would put to almost reflect the concerns of the people at Land Management and, and, and other agencies that may be involved with this. But again, I'm just not sure that even with this amendment, it's a palatable solution in terms of how do we deal with rezoning property on this island? And again, I don't have a yea or nay on this just yet, but I just wanted to express that sentiment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Masi, Senator Espaldón, are there anyone else wishing to speak on the Guthers If not, I'm... Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Senator Frank Blosch on the amendment, on the Guthers Amendment, I will recognize you. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I can appreciate the concern brought up by the author of the amendment, but I have to agree with a good colleague from Gania Heights, in that, you know, first off, where, where are we jumping to? First off, this body is looking at an application that's, that is before this body to rezon a property from R1 to Commercial. And then this body is going to go ahead and continue to provide limitations beyond that application, despite the fact that just because an individual has a commercial license or, or, or an individual's property is zoned commercial, doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, it gives them the opportunity to be able to do anything and everything commercial. There are still other processes that have to, that the individual has to apply, has to go through, to be able to, in this case, get a license to to go through, to be able to, in this case, get a license to sell liquor. As was mentioned by the author of the main bill, there was a concern, you know, about, from the community members, about individuals, if this place were to eventually be able to sell alcohol, that there were concern about individuals consuming alcohol outside of the prison, outside of the facility, or on that property. There are laws that govern that already, and it's just a matter of the enforcement. Going back to a point that was made by, you know, my good colleague from Gania Heights, there is a process that the individual would still have to go through. If the individual decides that, maybe now we don't want, I don't want to put a laundromat, maybe I want to expand this laundromat and include a retail license that includes the sale of liquor, they still have to go through it. Then, one of the other concerns that was brought up by the good speaker and good colleague from Malolos with regards to, and she, right now, she's drafting an amendment to be placed here, which is just a reiteration, which will be just a reiteration of current law, is that if this property falls within the limits of a school, or a playground, it's governed, and the actions of whatever facilities there is going to be governed, is going to be, the law is going to dictate what it can do with regards to drug-free school zones. So, there's already a number of laws, a number of layers that are put in place. It doesn't necessarily mean that this individual, just by giving him the commercial license that they can and cannot do what they want to do. They have to go through other processes. Now, down the road, will this body have to entertain a request by this landowner or other landowners to give exemptions to this law or that law, so that they can sell license, I mean, they can sell liquor or they can't sell liquor? That is yet to be seen. And maybe throughout this whole discussion, after we're done with this, maybe we should go back to another discussion that many of us were having on session, you know, amongst ourselves, with regards to this whole zoning process. I'm just concerned, Madam Speaker, that we're going to get into this whole era of, yes, but, no unless. We have to trust the other processes that are in place. And there were two great processes that were expanded on earlier. One, again, was that this does not give an individual a license to sell liquor. That is another process that has to be. And in that process, there are other guidelines, there are other laws that have to be adhered to, have to be abided by before even that license can be provided. I just caution my colleagues and ask, please, look, if we're going to go down this road, let's go down this road. But I don't think we should get into, yes, but, or no unless, or no until. It's yes or no. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sijus Massey, Senator Blosse. Are there anyone else wishing to speak? If not, I'm going to have Senator Guthert, you may close on your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I have an amendment to my amendment, which may satisfy some of the concerns.
Okay, go ahead and proceed. Do you have it written, Senator Guthert?
No, but it's very short and very simple.
Okay.
And it simply... I want to add the following words before the start of my original amendment. It's very simple. And the words would be, "In accordance with applicable alcohol and drug-free zone laws, comma, then everything else would be the same as written." So, the language, the additional language would be, "In accordance with applicable alcohol and drug-free school zone laws, comma, no liquor license shall be issued at any time in connection with the rezoning of this property from R1 Zone to Commercial C-Zone."
Okay, Senator...
Yes.
Senator Guthert, if you can just write that, I'm going to go ahead and entertain other of the colleagues on the floor in reference to your amendment to the amendment. Senator Respecho, on the Guthert's Amendment to the Amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, that amendment just underscores why this main amendment is probably not necessary. And I rise with all due respect, and my initial concern still remains. If you look at the paragraph preceding that amendment, it says, "No liquor license shall be issued at any time in connection with the rezoning of this property." This property. Is that to imply, then, that the surrounding areas, although they're within 500 feet of a school or a church, is that sending a message to the ABC Alcohol Beverage Control Board that, well, the legislature is intending, is intent in this piece of legislation, that they just don't want this property to be able to have a liquor license? But there are laws in the books that take care of those legitimate concerns expressed by the good gentle lady from Aguilao. But do we have to restate a law and say, there's an existing law, but in this particular case, I want to remind you that you have to follow this law? But in the course of doing that, Madam Speaker, you might send the message that the other properties, this legislature didn't point it out, that the other properties are eligible to apply for a liquor license, even though they are within that alcohol-drug-free school zones. And so, that's my concern, that although some things may appear to be simple on the surface, I just don't want to create any mixed messages in this particular case. So, if this property is prohibited from applying for an ABC license because they're within that alcohol and drug-free school zone, what's to say that the, because the legislature didn't talk about the other properties, although there's existing statutes, what's to say that they're not going to go ahead and issue those licenses? So, you might, or if this particular property is not within the drug and alcohol-free school zone, what essentially you're creating is a disparity in that you're only limiting this property from being able to have a liquor license, but its neighbor, which may also not be in the drug and alcohol-free school zone, because if this property is not within that 500-foot radius, and the neighbor won't be, then you're creating a disparity for this particular applicant. And so, I just rise to express some caution and probably reassure the mover, that if there are existing laws in the books, and if you have to restate that we have to follow that law, then this amendment is not at all necessary. So, I thank you for the opportunity, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Senator Respecho, I have Senator Uggan on the Guthert's Amendment to the Amendment. You're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I think that, as I look at this particular proposal, obviously, we want to be consistent with other policies that are in the books, and when we're talking about drug-free and alcohol-free school zones within 500 feet of school facilities, certainly, I stand in support of the insertion of that language, because it would only reinforce exactly what the nature of the island-wide policy is. And that is, that absolutely any illegal activities that are caught within 500 feet, whether they deal with drug or alcohol, in the alcohol and drug-free zone, then obviously, the penalties associated with that would increase quite a bit. So, that would more, would be more or less dissentive in terms of anyone even participating something to that effect, even though the law says otherwise that you should not. But, Madam Speaker, I still have that one concern that I shared a little earlier, because in this particular case, we are restricting by law, or we would restrict by law, basically any future opportunities for the property owner. Let's say, for example, this property owner decides to sell out and sell his property, or this particular parcel of land, to another individual. This provision itself would restrict that. Now, if it falls within that 500-foot radius of the school facility that's adjacent or located in Latty Heights Plantation area, then obviously, it would continue to be restricted. But I still share that particular concern in terms of prohibiting any property owner from, understandably, the public hearing with the Guam Land Use Commission said the residents, at this point in time, would not support the allowance of a liquor license for this particular facility, but what may happen down the road? And by codifying it, unless this body, once again, to reiterate, unless this body comes back and amends this law, it makes it extremely difficult for me to be able to stand here and support this, only because of that reason. If I was, for example, the owner of the property and I consent, okay, I'm not going to be able to, I agree that, in fact, no liquor license will be acquired as a result of my retail operations, but what's, let's say, what's to prohibit me 10 years down the road, if in fact, another facility is right adjacent to this building, or this property, looks at establishing a very similar facility and would like to get an ABC license? Now, that leaves me in a predicament, where in fact, I'm outrightly restricted, I have to go get the law changed, where in fact, the adjacent property owner would just have to go through the regular process and perhaps convince more of the residents that it's beneficial for the entire community there. So, I still have that concern, although I support the amendment on reemphasizing that a school zone should continue to remain alcohol-free and drug-free, I still have some initial reservations in regards to supporting this amendment, because by law, it would be codified, and it would make it extremely difficult down the road for this property owner, or any future property owner of this parcel of property, to be able to go through the regular process. If they go through the ABC license, or they go through the rezoning again, just to allow for permission to operate with this particular provision, then at least he or she, the property owners, would be complying with the provisions of law, and it would give them that much flexibility. I'm just not inclined to prevent any particular activity as it applies to this infant item as the law would provide. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Uggan. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the Guthert's Amendment to the Amendment? Speaker Wambat, you're recognized on the amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, I know that several of our attorneys here would say that if you put so many attorneys in a room, they're going to have different opinions. And in this case, of course, you know, we've got 15 members, and there are 15 different opinions. And I understand where some of our colleagues are coming from. I know the senator from Gania Heights had indicated that, would this then specifically state that this property then should not, or could not be issued, you know, a license because of, you know, the sale of alcohol or drugs within a school zone, as if, within a school zone? And there is, and I did not mention this earlier, that there is a playground in this center, really, between two housing areas there, that will be, would almost be directly across from where then any of the businesses are to be located. The whole issue of doing this, Madam Speaker, is that when you think of where our children can congregate, and to be able to feel, you know, free and safe, to be able to play, come together, whether it's in a school, that, you know, it is incumbent upon the leaders to make sure that we do provide that safe haven for our children, that they would not be praised to those who are either trying to solicit from, you know, schoolchildren in particular, because they are very vulnerable. And although this amendment, when you think of it, is that we might say, there is no need then to do this, because there are, there's federal laws that actually has a greater distance, it's about 1,000 feet around, and for Guam, it's 500. But, you know, if there is a violation, of course, then, you know, realistically, yes, we could, you know, very well say that the 1,000 feet, you know, from the vicinity or the entrance of a school, or the entrance of the park, that then, these types of establishments then should not be selling alcohol, or that anyone should not be loitering in the area. And, you know, it just depends, I suppose, to our members, is that sometimes we feel we want to be able to reiterate again what is in law to make us feel comfortable, you know, with the bill. Some others would say, well, there's no need, because there are those laws out there already. It's up now to the committee, the ABC Board, to review this, and, you know, and evaluate it, and measure the area, and then not even issue a license if it falls within that 500 feet radius. If it does not, then, you know, well, then naturally, they will, you know, go ahead and give the license. I know that our colleague here had mentioned as well, that although, since this is going to be mandated by law, could we very well then go back in and have that, you know, section repealed? And of course, anything is possible. It's just, this whole idea of coming through for the rezoning is being done through the legislature. Laws are made. So, we amend, we repeal, and we enact. So, that in itself is also, I mean, it's an option as well that's available, you know, to the owner of this particular property. So, I just think that by actually listing and making the laws, the alcohol and drug-free zone law applicable in this case, actually then supports the rest of, you know, the amendment. I think, and just, it brings some comfort, I know, to many of our colleagues here, who actually want to be able to provide, you know, this zoning, and at the same time, be able to take care, you know, of those who are vulnerable to drug and alcohol. So, I definitely, and I am in support of the amendment to the amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Bueno, Pobeto. Speaker Wambat, I see two hands up at the same time. I'm going to go ahead and address Senator Espaldon, I saw your hand first, and then Senator Palacios, on the Guthert's Amendment to the Amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, not really sure in terms of whether I'm rising in support or against this amendment to the amendment, but I just want to make a comment, that now it reads, I mean, the initial amendment was, "No liquor license shall be issued at any time in connection with the rezoning of this property." Now, you say, with this amendment, it now reads, "In accordance with applicable alcohol and drug-free school zone laws, no liquor license shall be issued at any time." So, that really changes, that really changes the whole nature of the initial amendment. The initial amendment basically said, "There shall be no liquor license." Now, this says, in essence, that if the law, if it falls within the law, and it is X amount of feet from a school, or whatever the law may be, right, then a liquor license is permissible. So, now, and I see a puzzled look on the author of the amendment, to the amendment's face, but technically, if you look at the language now, it says, "In accordance with applicable school and drug-free school zone laws, no liquor license." So, in other words, the predicate is, if it's in compliance with the law, then an alcohol license is allowed. That's what it says. I just want to make sure, and I want to make that observation, to make sure everybody understands what we are now dealing with. We're no longer dealing with an absolute, "There shall be no liquor license to this property." It just says now, that if it falls within the law, if it's X amount of feet from a school or a church or whatnot, then a liquor license is okay. Now, the problem becomes, do we, as a body, go ahead and, again, override, in essence, the decision of the Land Use Commission who disapproved the rezoning of this property, according to law, and according to all the information before them, or not? And again, that's still problematic in my mind, but I just wanted to rise to at least make sure that we all understand what the... make sure that we all understand what the addition, additional words now means to this amendment. It changes the whole complexity of the amendment to say, yes, an alcohol license is allowed if it falls within the rules. That's what this says. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Espaldon. Senator Palacios on the Amendment to the Amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the Amendment to the Amendment. The fear of the language that the inclusion of this amendment would seem to bar a future modification to the language. The very reason why we're here today, Madam Speaker, is that there is a current law that prohibits actually the establishment of a commercial activity in that particular lot. So there's a law that restricts that. Now we're trying to provide for a condition, conditional use. So whatever those conditions would be, perhaps, of course, a restriction, but at which time, of course, at an appropriate time in the future, five years, 10 years from now, the future legislature can come back and do the same thing and debate and perhaps then disallow that or remove that, just by the very, very thing that we're debating right now is there's a law against it right now, and we're trying to amend that law. So I do not fear any hardship in the future by the inclusion of an exception here for now, because future legislature will deal with that in the future. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sizusmasi, Senator Palacios, are there anyone else wishing to speak?
Ben, Speaker.
Yes, Sizusmasi, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I tend to support the amendment, but I do also have some concerns when it is applied. And as I was listening to the good senator from Tamuning, and he said that the amendment to the amendment brings a whole different light to how the original amendment was first stated in reference to that in accordance with the applicable alcohol and drug-free school zone laws, no liquor shall be issued at any time in connection with that rezoning. And it probably would have answered my first concern, but as I look at the law as presented to me and as given to be by legal counsel, it specifically states that 11 GCA, Chapter 3, on the allowance of the alcoholic beverage control, that subsection 3306 has a Part A and a Part B. And the Part A talks about the issuance, shall not issue an on-sale license for premises located within that distance. And we talked about the feats again, 500 feet from that school, church, and from schools, church, hospital, or public or private general education. But Part B says that there's an exemption notwithstanding the provisions of sub-paragraph A of this section, the more the board may issue an on-sale license for premises located with a distance of 500 feet. And then it says from any church, hospital, or public or private school of general education where persons under the age of 18 are thought, if the board finds that the premises to be licensed are such that would not disturb the church services or hospital patients or the school students or detract from the peace and quiet of the neighborhood, and that the general benefit to the territory at large by the licensing of such premises would outweigh any benefit to be derived from a strict enforcement of the prohibition, no such exception may be made if the presiding officer of the church, hospital, or school within 500 feet, feet distance does not consent in writing to the waiver of such prohibition. And the reason why I read that in detail, Mr. Speaker, is because they talk about the on-sale. And I think, and as the good clerk stated to me in a sidebar, I am of the concern that even as we see today, based on those exemptions and conditional permits that were given in the past, we can see today that there are some areas within the community where there is a school, a church, or a hospital, and right next to it is a store that sells that. My concern that has been brought up is the drinking, the actual drinking. And that's what maybe I'd like to yield to the author, because if we're looking at the applicability and what waivers can be given, would it be strictly for the on-sale or for the actual drinking of the consumer or the customer that comes into the specific area? And maybe that's a whole different ballgame within itself. So, Senator Guthert.
Is there a request to yield to the question?
No, I'm saying, I'm saying, is her intent for this based on the applicability of following the law on 11 GCA, which is, talks about the on-sale for alcohol, are you talking about the selling or are you talking about the consuming? And that's where it brings me to my concern. I just want it answered.
So that's a request for the author to yield.
Yeah.
Senator Guthert, will you yield?
Well, it appears from the testimony at the hearing of the Land Use Commission that people don't want it sold and they don't want it consumed in their neighborhood.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Senator Guthert.
I appreciate that, and if that's the way it's said, then maybe it may need to be amended again. But I can understand that based on what the amendment to the amendment has, that has been proffered, I tend to, and I will give it my favorable consideration in support just based on the way it's written. Sizusmasi.
Thank you very much, Senator Muny Barnes. Any other speaker on the amendment as amended? We'll just have a very short one-minute recess for a change.
The legislature is back in session. We've, everybody's spoken who wanted to speak on the amendment to the amendment, and there is an objection, so I'm going to call for the votes. Those who are in favor of the amendment to the amendment, please raise your hand. Please keep your hands up now because now I see more votes. Senator Cavil, was your hand up? Oh, you changed your mind? Okay, one, two, three. The amendment to the amendment, can I please see your hands? Don't put it behind your podium. One, two, three, four, five. Guthert, you're not voting for your amendment?
You want me to vote for it?
You would have had eight. Okay, so the amendment then did not carry, so the amendment failed. So now we're back to the original amendment by Senator Guthert. And is there anybody else who would like to speak on the original amendment? There being none, you're right, so I will call on the author then to close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I looked at the map, and that's what influenced my reconsideration of my Second Amendment. At any rate, Madam Speaker, I think, let me say this. These property owners came to the legislature asking for our help because they want to utilize their property for a commercial purpose. They originally went to the Land Use Commission and they ran into some problems. And the problems are reflected in the Land Use Commission reports, the hearings. And basically it indicates that the community in which this property is located, primarily within the Laddie Heights area and the Laddie Plantation area, objected to the rezoning of this property if liquor and beer were going to be sold there. And the reason they did this is because of the current experiences they're having with other enterprises of a similar nature in the vicinity. Now, all of us know here that the rezoning of land is occurring on our island, and many residential communities have been impacted in ways that they're not pleased with because of the sale of liquor and beer close to their homes, close to their places of residence, close to proximities of civic activities and school activities, be it away, 500 feet away, but still within the vicinity in which children congregate, including bus stops and playgrounds and things of that nature. Now, we are being asked here to consider a rezoning request. And I think many of us here are willing to do it because we recognize that property owners should be able to use their property. But on the other hand, we cannot dismiss the sentiments of the people in the community that came together and expressed their desires. And I'm sure many people in this community are watching us right now and are probably very surprised that this bill is being considered here. I want the people of Laddie Heights and Laddie Plantations to know that this legislature is considering their concerns, and we're trying to develop a reasonable balance. And that's why I introduced the amendment, which would authorize the rezoning of the property, but would not authorize an issuance of a liquor license for the purpose of selling beer or liquor at this retail laundromat establishment. Now, some arguments have been made that there are other businesses in the area that do this. Well, I can't speak for those other businesses and how they were able to get their liquor licenses. I'm sure they didn't come to the legislature to request a rezoning of their property. We have a responsibility to look out for the community at large as well as the interests of landowners. And I am very comfortable, Madam Speaker, that this amendment that I've offered, the original amendment, I'd like to read it, simply says that no liquor license shall be issued at any time in connection with the rezoning of this property from R1 Zone to Commercial C Zone. And that is for the community in Laddie Heights and Laddie Plantation. Now, should the landowners want to come back to the legislature in the future, I'm sure they could do it because they did it for the rezoning request. What would stop them from coming back here in the future and ask for a rezone, a consideration of language so that they could get a liquor license? I would hope that my colleagues would not respond to it in the immediate future. But we have to look out for the interests of landowners who built their homes, invested a large part of their income in buying a home, in building their homes, in raising their families, not to be subject to a devaluation of their property because of rezoning that this legislature acts on. And I believe this amendment helps in that regard. So I ask my colleagues to please support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Guthert. So on the Guthert's Amendment, are there any objections? There is an objection, okay. So therefore, I'm going to call for the votes. All those in favor of the Guthert's Amendment, please raise your hand. Okay, no more, so therefore the amendment failed. I left my bill down there. So other than, are there any, is there anybody else who would like to speak on the motion? None, so I will ask the primary author then to close, Senator Cavil.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I want to close real quickly, but I have to read this letter. These are just some statements that have been made in regards to how this is moved forward. And again, it's in the committee report. February 2, 2009, a letter assigned, again, addressed to myself, but by Mr. Chun, and there Hafaday, Senator Cavil. My name is Mr. Hun Pio Chun. I respectfully request your assistance with rezoning of our property. And then, of course, it designates the property to commercial zone. It is my intention to open a laundromat for the residents of Mingilau, thereby expanding the choice of laundromats for all island residents. We greatly appreciate your favorable consideration of our request. February 2, 2009. This has been moved forward, again, from the very beginning by the owner of this, of these establishments, or of this property, to again fulfill his dream for providing for a service to the people of Guam. There was a letter then, of course, sent, and this is by the office of the mayor, municipality of Mingilau, again, to the chairman of the committee. And again, it's Hafaday, Mr. Chairman. The Mingilau Municipal Planning Council supports the request of Mr. Hun Pio Chun's request for a zone change. And then, of course, it states the lot number and who introduced it. The requested zone change serves to enhance the quality of life for residents along Route 15 and Laddie Heights with the proposed plan to open a laundromat. Other laundromats serving the Mingilau residents include one on Route 10 and Lejung, Baragada, and the newly opened one near Champion Store on Route 10, near University of Guam. We, and residents of Mingilau, appreciate your favorable consideration on Bill 32. This is signed by the mayor, Nito Blas, by the vice mayor, Alan Ungakta. Madam Chair, Madam Speaker, there was a letter sent Madam Chair, Madam Speaker, there was a letter sent by the Municipal Planning Council, Nunito Blas, Francine Campos, Francisco Francisco, Bernadette Quintaniza, Federico Mendiola, Rocky Mantanonia, Ben Carbolito, Jose Santos, Alan O'Gacta, Juan Ugan, Oscar Jesus, from the Municipality of Mingilau, on the Municipal Planning Council. And this is relative to Mingilau Municipal Planning Council reviewing Mr. Chun's application request for a zone change, be it resolved by the council. Then, of course, it says whereas and identifies the property. And whereas, and then, of course, it identifies that this was submitted in accordance with public law by, to the Department of Land Management. And whereas, a presentation to the Municipal Planning Council on May 23rd, 2007, revealed and discussed during the regular monthly meeting held at Mingilau Senior Citizen Center. And whereas, they have the application for the zoning, the zone change to the council. And then it resolves, it resolves that the Mingilau Municipal Planning Council supports the said application of zone change. And then, of course, this has sent, been sent to the, again, the appropriate bodies of land management and to the governor. Madam Speaker, there is a letter sent by a landowner, again, wishing to zone change for the betterment of his life and his family, for what he perceives as something that will be not only good for him, but the community, a laundromat. It has been attested and affirmed by the mayor and the vice mayor of the Village of Mingilau. It has been attested and affirmed by the Municipal Planning Council. And you're right, there was a protest put out and the Department of Land Management stated on Bill 32, considering alcohol use. And I can't say, and for the record, if there is an issue with Laddie Heights Market, which is currently operating within 750 feet because of alcohol being consumed at the premises, then somebody is breaking the law. Someone is breaking the law and they have to answer to that. I must say, and there has been a protest, and one of those that was protesting this zone change happens to be the owner of Laddie Heights Market. This bit reminds me a little bit of what happened in Tumuning not too long ago, again, in a similar bill I introduced that had to deal with a landowner making use of his or her properties for the betterment of themselves and their families and the community. We've been discussing this issue on alcohol. It's been, they're focused on alcohol. That's a, that's a good, that's a good issue to discuss. But the issue here, which has been brought forward, there are laws in the books. There is a process that will take into consideration the concerns of the community. And alcohol is one of them. And I'm sure the owner of Laddie Heights Market is also concerned. Madam Speaker, government is there to serve the people, not the other way around. It seems so interesting that when it came to those members of that municipality and it went to the subject of the landowner, how he or she feels it is best to make use of their property, there seems to be open acclamation in support of the moving of this bill. It was stuck, of course, when it came to an agency of the administration, an administration that, of course, was looking towards complaints that were being made. It's interesting how some of these complaints stopped the whole process. Madam Speaker, it was mentioned earlier, I guess my geography was a little bit off, and it's, again, proximity. It's still in the Mingilau area, but the area I mentioned, of course, was a little farther north. This is closer to areas of high residential volume and traffic. It is an area that will indeed grow in size, in population. It's interesting how this gentleman wants to open a laundromat and was mentioned that there was a park not far by, not too far by. There's a lot of residents that live in the area. Well, you know, that'd be nice if someone, rather than having to go down the road, Laddie Heights, down to Dedido or go towards Legang, that they don't have to go too far away to wash their clothes while their child or their kids were at a park not far by, too far away. It's better than leaving them at the household by themselves or leaving them in that park while they have to go down to Legang, washing their clothes and drying their clothes. And what about, well, there are other things a retail store sells other than alcohol and whether it's pampers or rice or dog food. It'd be nice to have a laundromat in a store that could provide services to the people in that community, whether they're having to leave their kids in a park or their house while they drive down the road to Dedido or to Baragada. We're doing a lot of assumptions around here, a lot of presupposing. The process is occurring and has occurred. There is someone that has been coming to this body since 2009, since the beginning of 2009, trying to build a dream for himself and his family. Someone who feels there's an opportunity for not only him and his family, but there's an opportunity to contribute to the community. This is not some big multimillion-dollar corporation that's going to build a school that has special bills and laws enacted into it for its purpose. This is a small business. This is a family like you and, like any one of us here, that's just trying to make a better, better life for themselves. We've discussed this measure for about two hours. My dear colleagues, I ask you, I ask you, please support Bill 32. In the end, this is what it's all about. It's us as public servants. It's us and public servants as public servants, listening and hearing to the issues of our community. And with that, moving forward in legislation that can empower and enable them. I ask you, my dear colleagues, for your support in the passage of Bill 32. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Calvo. On the motion entered place, Bill 32, as amended to the third reading, filed without any objections, and so ordered. I'm going to move down to Bill 345 for the other members, for the other bills that are ready for presentation or not here. So Senator Tai Tegui, you're recognized on Bill 345.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good morning to my colleagues. Madam Speaker, Bill 345 is enacted to add Article 2 to Chapter 30 of 5 GCA relative to authorizing the Office of Attorney General to recover costs associated with providing statutory mandate legal services to agencies and programs that are supported by the tax base of the Government of Guam. Madam Speaker, as you know, in the last session that we had, we ended, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, and I motioned that this bill be placed on the second reading file.
Third reading file.
Third reading file and I'd like to speak on it.
Yes, you may proceed, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. As I mentioned before regarding the bill, Madam Speaker, you know, as we ended the last session, we had brought a bill that was authored by one of my good colleagues with regards to providing an avenue for the Attorney General to be able to, you know, review the contracts and the procurement solicitations that exceed $500,000. And as you know, the Office of the Attorney General sent over a statement in a letter form dated June 30th, 2010, with regards to the difficulty in order to provide for those mandates, you know, through their office. And it stated here, if I may read this section from the Office of the Attorney General, it says that they had made it known a number of its concerns as, at the public hearing on the legislative bill that became public law 72-30, this included reporting that we did not have a significant, a number of attorneys to handle this new mandate. As you may be aware, the Office of the Attorney General has attempted to address the staffing issues by seeking to enter into either a memorandum of understanding or a memorandum of agreement with certain autonomous agencies who have the financial ability to provide funding for our office to hire an additional Assistant Attorney General, who in turn would be assigned and dedicated to assist their agency with procurement and other legal matters. There is also legislation, Bill 345-30, that would enhance the legal authority and capability of the Office of the Attorney General to obtain such funding. And that being said, Madam Speaker, the bill that was proffered earlier, or the last ending, I'm not sure the bill number, it, actually what it did was it dedicated an Assistant Attorney General from the Office of the Attorney General's office, dedicated to review that process. But what my bill simply does, Madam Speaker, is it an avenue of recovering costs and providing funding for the Attorney General in a means of charging the autonomous agencies for this type of work needed to assess procurement processes. So, Madam Speaker, and I ask you and my colleagues to support 345 in hopes that the Attorney General not only has the ability to provide the requirements in Bill 72-30, but an avenue to recover the costs to retain additional attorneys that is desperately needed at the Attorney General's office. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Tai Tegui. Anyone who would like to speak on the motion? Senator Panglin, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the proposed bill. The bill basically expands on a system that was put into place pursuant to some earlier statute that had been piloted by some of the departments and agencies. As you know, we've expanded the requirement for the review on the procurement side of the contracts sent out under RFPs as well as procurement contracts, so that all of them get reviewed by the Attorney General's office. In the past, almost all of them had been reviewed by the AGS to form and, mainly as to form and not legality in some instances. And now we've, to get better hold on this process, to ensure that we minimize agencies moving forward in the procurement process without legal guidance for projects that are funded outside of the general fund, we are now injecting the review of the Attorney General at the beginning rather than just at the tail end of the process. And if they get these guidance, then perhaps we will ensure that we do things and dot our i's and cross our t's at the beginning versus at the end, and therefore leads to a smoother procurement process and maybe subject to less challenges because of the legal review at the beginning, from the RFP issuance to the terms and conditions up until contract and award. And of course, now that we require the Attorney General to do this for even autonomous agencies, we need additional resources to do that. And one of the ways that we've done this is to use portions of, for example, in the federal grant side, portions of the grant under indirect costs that they're able to charge against grants for administrative oversight over these grants, that the legal review process will be funded out of this administrative provision. In the past, we funded Attorney Generals out of grants. For example, EPA in the past had a full-time Attorney General because of the regulatory nature of their work, assigned to it and paid for out of the EPA grants. The Department of Public Works, last year, we actually entered into an agreement with the Attorney General where the federal grant itself would pay and actually, especially with the increased funding under ARRA, that there are now two Attorney Generals, Assistant Attorneys Generals, assigned to Public Works for the procurement process under the ARRA grants, fully funded by the federal grant. The Department of Agriculture has utilized the services of Attorney General through an MOU, in which, again, their federal grant pays for a portion of the salary that reviews those federal grants. So we're not, what we're doing is trying to ensure that the Attorney General's office is funded, and there's many challenges on funding it fully out of the general fund. And in the past, we've been able to do that, but in these challenging times, we're not now able to do that. But we still got to proceed in timely manner in the review and approval of these federal grants and the projects and the programs funded by these federal grants. And how do we do that? Because most of these federal grants allow for indirect costs, we can now include the legal cost of the review process as part of that indirect cost, and the Attorney General will just charge these department and agencies. So it won't cannibalize the general fund or the special funds, which are local sources, that they'll, they'll be reimbursed when the fund is not part of the general fund or the cost of, and the agency implementing the work is not fully funded by the general fund or the special fund. And it is only from the indirect costs in the federal grant side. And on the, on the autonomous agencies, it'll be through their revenue stream that allows the Attorney Generals to charge them if they review it, or as allowed in an earlier bill, the Attorney General can designate the in-house counsel to review that for those programs. So this just provides us an opportunity to recoup some of the cost of the administrative services that are provided, administrative and legal services provided by the Attorney General's office to these departments and agencies on projects that are funded by federal grants or by independent revenue streams outside of the general fund and the, and the special funds. So I just think it does allow us, again, this just expands on what we were able to actually put into place, which was through an amendment that I had sponsored at DPW, and it builds it now to allow the recouping of that cost through other departments and agencies that administer federal grants and require the services of the Attorney General's
On the motion, is there anybody else who would like to speak? Senator Palacios, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of Bill 345. This bill, Madam Speaker, simply will authorize, of course, the Attorney General to recover costs. And with this bill, of course, the AG probably would be able to hire additional attorneys. I remember this legislature passing a bill that actually centralized the legal review of procurements amounting to $500,000. And of course, I support that legislation. And so later on, it was revealed to us by the AG that that mandate actually overloaded them with work. And so this bill is actually, would support that. This bill applies to autonomous agencies, agencies that generate their own revenue and not agencies that are supported by the general funds. And it only, it's only fair, of course, that the AG recover costs, who then in turn can probably hire two or three or one attorney to, to continue to review any procurement project that is worth more than $500,000, to avoid or to minimize future litigation. And that's the intent of that original statute, Madam Speaker. So I rise in support of Bill 345. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Senator, we speak on the motion.
Madam Speaker, I do certainly rise in support of this bill, but I just have one concern. I understand that the legislative findings, the author is pointing out that witnesses that testified at the that testified at the private, the public hearing said that the private law firms currently bill their clients from two hundred dollars to three hundred and fifty dollars per hour. And I don't dispute that sentiment being expressed to the legislature, because that's how excessive it could be. But on page three, line twelve, I know originally, the author's intent was to set the price at two hundred dollars per hour. The amended version says shall not exceed, underlined, shall not exceed two hundred dollars per hour. So, my concern is at the same time, we're trying to have some cost recovery, we might create a situation where the autonomous agency might just say, well, this is all I can afford, fifty dollars, seventy-five dollars, a hundred dollars. I mean, either we set a price range, maybe between one fifty and two hundred dollars, we set a high, we set a low, or we just, maybe if the author would yield to my question.
Senator Taitegui, do you yield?
Yes, I do, Madam Speaker, and I appreciate that comment that was made. As I failed to mention earlier, that it is substituted, this bill has been substituted by committee. And when we spoke with the attorney general, they thought the first amount that I put out there might have been a little bit of excessive in price. So, what we allowed it to do is just give a no greater than two hundred thousand. Now, this is based on the attorney's, attorney general's decision on how to charge the autonomous agencies, not the other way around, for the autonomous agency to designate how much they're going to give out for this work being done, but the opposite in effect. The attorney general can bill them no more than two hundred dollars billable hours, or could go even further down to maybe a hundred and ninety dollars billable hours, but it does not give that authority for the autonomous agency to designate that specific amount.
I thank the author for that response, but if we're setting policy here and we're trying to encourage the attorney general to pursue the cost recovery, we don't know what can happen. We don't know who the next attorney general will be, if they'll be ultra-liberal or ultra-conservative. We don't know what price structure they might set. So, if the body is willing, Madam Speaker, I move to just say, to restore the original language on line twelve and shall read, shall be two hundred dollars per hour. And then just, I mean, we just got to be very firm in what we're trying to do here and say, if you went out and hired a, first of all, we want them to shy away from hiring counsel out, services that can be provided by the Attorney General Office. After all, there should be our chief legal officer for the governor of Guam, and now we're trying to have autonomous agencies following that thinking.
So, Senator Respecheau, you're making a, well, shall we take a brief recess?
Or you do a price range?
We're going to do a recess. The legislature is back in recess. Apparently, there's still a little bit more work that needs to be done with legal counsel to finalize the language on Bill three, forty-five, so we're going to go and take a lunch recess until two o'clock this afternoon. Session, and I would like to recognize Senator Panglin, because there was a last-minute concern.
Mrs. Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I was reading the bill, and we wanted to ensure that the intent of the bill remains true. And that is, the intent of the bill is where the, where there is an ability to recoup costs from other than the general fund. other than the general fund-supported agencies and line agencies would be, you know, additional revenue to the Attorney General's office or to the Government of Guam in the special account to be used by the Attorney General's office. And it was not to allow the Attorney General, who is funded by the general fund, to be charging line agencies that are funded by the general fund or special funds, to allow them to charge for that because it's all out of the same pocket. And so, in order to ensure that, the amendment I'm proposing, which you have, is pretty simple. I'm sorry that the amendment is not lined, but if you go to the section of the bill, which is section --
Page two.
Page two.
Line 25.
Actually, it starts on page two.
Yeah.
You go to page two, and on line, like you said, it's on line nine of page three. We would add the word "line agencies" after "Government of Guam," so that it would read that the -- not the general fund or a special fund or the Government of Guam line agencies. So that the Attorney General will continue to render services, even if it's for the procurement area of these contracts, which is their responsibility as a chief legal officer to render services for this. And since both are funded out of the general fund, it doesn't make sense to have now the line agency budget reduced to pay the Attorney General. So it would be just to make that simple clarification. We put it in red because of the way the bill had been written in terms of underlined and the amendment would be on line nine of page three. After "Government of Guam," you would insert the words "line agencies." So it would read, if you began from the previous line, would just reimburse the legal services and costs of the Attorney General's office are not the general fund or a special fund or the Government of Guam line agencies. So that's the amendment, Madam Speaker.
And we may want to also correct further that the amendment that was made earlier where it says that shall be, the cost shall be not exceed --
Oh, yeah, that was an amendment.
That passed. Yes, that was adopted. No, but I know, because if we accept this amendment, then it -- so, okay. So on the amendment, objections ordered. So on -- oh, I'm terribly sorry, but is it going to -- I will allow you to speak, but is it going to make a change, you mean? I'm sorry. Senator -- okay, so I would recognize both of you.
I appreciate that, Madam Speaker, and, you know, if my line of questioning, basically, causes the body to have to reconsider the actions.
You're right, and then I would consider that as well.
Appreciate it. And just the author of the amendment would yield to a question with regards to --
Senator Panglin, and do you yield to a question?
And I'll provide the questions so that he can -- is recognizing that we want to -- that you're not going to touch the special fund or the Government of Guam line agencies. What about, you know, the -- I do believe there are some semi-autonomous agencies that are -- that do have the special fund, the pharmaceutical fund for the Guam Memorial Hospital. How would this affect the --
Senator, do you yield to the question?
The -- I'm not sure what the question is.
The question basically is recognizing that not to use the general fund or special fund of the Government of Guam line agency, but this then, does this preclude or does this leave open the utilization of special fund of the Government of Guam semi-autonomous agency?
I would say yes. And usually, the semi-autonomous agencies -- and again, the semi-autonomous agencies have revenues independent of the general fund. For example, the hospital.
Right.
And I think that's one of the -- and I know it's not semi-autonomous with the -- but the -- there's the pharmaceutical fund of the hospital, which is a general fund appropriation to the hospital. So if the Attorney General was rendering a opinion or reviewing the process of the procurement for GMH, then it would just come out from the revenues. And really, it doesn't matter where it comes from. It's just that we just didn't want that internal transfer from general fund agency to general fund agency, which is where both, you know, where both come from.
Okay. Madam Speaker, along those lines, can I ask for just a 30-second recess to work with you all?
I was to send Bill 345 down to the third reading. Oh, you do have another amendment, so -- but I've gathered that in. Can you make a notwithstanding then motion for us to go back then, so then we can address?
No, no, we already have one of these, and we don't have to worry about this.
Oh, so --
My discussion was after the amendment.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a new amendment.
Oh, it's a new amendment?
Yes, yes, yes.
Oh. So that's a new -- okay, so. So Senator, well, so, but anyway, we need to -- no, no, I know, but I gathered it in already to go down to the third reading, yes, so that's the reason why.
You did?
Yes, I did.
Okay, Senator Respecho.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to reconsider the actions of body to allow the -- because Senator moved another amendment.
Okay, on the motion without objections ordered. Thank you very much, Senator Respecho. Senator Panglin, and you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm sorry, I had another amendment companion to that. And that would be on page three, line seven to nine also, in that same section, would be after 510 or 5150, add a semicolon, and then after the word "provided that," it would add the words "provided that for both one and two, the --" and then I have this written out, I'm sorry, Madam Speaker, I just not copied. So that it would read "provided that for both one and two, the sources of funding for the contract or procurement," or then add the word "or for reimbursing the legal services and the costs of the Attorney General's office are not the general fund or special fund of a line agency," which that -- of a line agency has already been approved. So it would be to --
Okay, but that language is in already eight lines, line eight and nine.
That's correct. The line agency is already in.
So the only amendment then is on line seven, after the word "the," I mean "that," and add "for both?"
After 5150, semicolon.
Oh, semicolon.
Add a semicolon. Then after the word "provided that," add "for both one and two, the."
Okay. Does anyone, does everyone understand the amendment? On line seven, after 5150, semicolon, then continue "provided that," then add the words "for both one and two, the."
The.
And you'll continue on with "sources."
Yes, and continue on.
Is that correct? Okay, so are there any questions, any comments? There being none on that amendment, so without any objections, then, so ordered. Does that complete then any other discussion or amendment, a brief recess? Session, and I recognize Senator Norio for an amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I was consulting with the, one of my staff, Mr. Lee, and also our legal counsel with regards to this. We wanted to make it such that the language is added to -- Also, the end of section 30202, which would be the, basically, the first section. So on page two, I'm sorry, page three, after the last, on 14, that is, line 14, insert the language that you see in the amendment, which will say --
After line 12, since that's not in.
On page three?
Yes.
Okay, fine, that's fine. So after the word "our," insert the language "nothing contained herein shall prohibit an agency subject to this act from requiring, as a term of the contract, that the vendor reimbursement, that the vendor reimburse the office of the Attorney General for reasonable attorney's fees generated as a result to the Attorney General's review." So what this means, Madam Speaker, is that the vendor who is bringing on the procurement or that is providing the procurement or the lease shall be responsible for paying the attorney's fees of the Attorney General, which we've now slated for $200 per hour, so that the -- those fees don't get carried on or are not borne by the consumer. So if these fees are required for the Attorney General's approval, which we understand is relatively minimal, we're not talking about an exorbitant amount of money, we're talking about probably in the range of one to, one to $2,000 in most cases for the review of the Attorney General's on most of these processes, it is going to be a relatively small amount. So what we're saying here is that nothing will prevent these fees from being recovered as a term of the contract in the procurement or in the lease process. as a term of the contract in the procurement or in the lease process.
Okay. On the amendment? I see some confused faces. Do you want a brief recess? Maybe it's talk, okay, recess.
(inaudible)
Senator Tenorio has proffered an amendment, and Senator Tai Tegui, I understand you wanted to make an amendment, or?
I would like to...
Okay, but then I want, I want, before I allow you to do that, maybe for your closing as well, you can...
Sure.
I would like to open it for other members, so Senator Spaldan, if you have any questions or concerns?
I, yes, we all feel for Madam Speaker.
I'm sorry?
Did I say all?
No.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I understand what, what's being attempted by this amendment. However, I have to at least, and again, I'm going through this in my mind as I'm speaking, so, excuse me if I stutter a little bit, but towards the, basically it says, "Nothing contained herein shall prohibit an agency subject to this act from requiring as a term of the contract that the vendor reimburse the office of the Attorney General..." Wait, wait, of the Attorney General, what's that next word?
For...
Oh, "for reasonable attorney fees generated as a result of the Attorney General's review." The problem here, Madam Speaker, if I may, and maybe it's such a far stretch, but it's part of the consideration, is that if you're saying to reimburse the office of the Attorney General for reasonable attorney fees generated as a result of the Attorney General's review, if the Attorney General's review actually produces some other effects in which, or some, some analysis that then, subject to perhaps another lawsuit, that the Attorney General would have to then litigate against, is that part of the consideration of this, of this amendment? In other words, this is not just limited to just review, because now you're saying any generated as a result of the Attorney General's review. Now, if the Attorney General's review actually raises more issues and we get into some major litigation, are we then saying that now that becomes part of that contract, and it's almost like an open-ended, hey, let's go for it, you know? And I say that, we've got to be very careful, because I'm not really sure that really, that scenario is really part of the intent of what is trying to be accomplished right here, but it does open that door and that possibility. And that's the only comment I wanted to make, so that's why I have a little bit of caution, right, to make sure that we do consider perhaps some of the unintended consequences that may occur, right, and that's why I'm just putting that forward. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Spaldan. So Senator Tenorio, on your amendment.
Well, I tell you what, Madam Speaker, I want to speak to the issue, but I want to go ahead and move an amendment that I think we all pretty much agree with, which is striking the word "reasonable," so it's simply the fees that are generated a result to the Attorney General's review, and then we'll talk about the concerns, if that's okay with you.
On that amendment, then, to delete the word "reasonable" without any objections, so order it.
Madam Speaker, as I understand it, the Attorney General's review is required for a number of different processes. We're not talking about line agencies, we're talking about autonomous and semi-autonomous agencies, and the intent here is to, to have those fees allowed to be part of a contract that the vendor recognizes are in fact costs associated with either the procurement or the lease, and so that cost is borne by the vendor, or is borne, is borne by the owner of the premises, in some cases. The crux of this is not it's a mandate, but it is a, it's permissive, so that they can put it as part of the contract, and of course, this will be on the front end before all the parties get involved and say, okay, this is the things we have to pay for. So what I want to do is give the option and say that there's nothing that prevents you from making these costs be borne by the vendor. So the Attorney General's review is the review, and if the review finds, if it's a longer review, sometimes the technicality, sometimes the legal review may be longer, and, and so that's why we took out the "reasonable," and so we simply say whatever the costs are shall be borne by the vendor, if that is something that the agency, the autonomous agency is seeking to do. What I'm trying to do is make this something that is not borne by the consumer, it's not borne by the ratepayers, it's not borne by the power and the water providers, it's, I mean, the, the, the ratepayers. So I want to try to put this squarely on the responsibility of the vendor, if it is the desire of the autonomous or semi-autonomous agency to make it a term of the contract. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Tenorio, then. So on the Tenorio amendment, as amended, then, there is one objection, so I'm going to call for the vote, so, all those standing in favor of the Tenorio amendment as amended, please raise your hand. Okay, one more time, then, on the motion, then, to send Bill 345 as amended to the third reading file, without any objections, so order it. Okay, the, no, we did 345, so now it's 373, and I'd like to recognize Senator Frank Blas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 373-30COR to the third reading, and like to have the opportunity to speak on it.
You may continue.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, a few months back, while attending a function, I was approached by a, a group of Manamku, who had asked that, and, you know, recognized that they have some concerns with regards to the activities of, of the government, not necessarily just the legislature, but the government of Guam as a whole, and recognizing that there are a lot of issues that the government was faced, was, was dealing with, and some of them felt quite, I think, for lack of a better term, intimidated, concerned, that because English was not their first language, as a matter of fact, Chamorro was their first language, their grasp and their understanding of the different notices and the different proceedings that were going on within the government, they were not really privy to, or didn't know of it, because, again, they were not able to grasp the English language. That prompted me to go ahead and start to do some, some research and see how we can, we're going to be able to help, you know, our, our Manamku, and, and those individuals who still don't have English, grasp English as their, as their primary language, but Chamorro as their primary language, but also more importantly, is recognizing that, you know, in, in the times that we're facing with today, as, as well as in, within the future, there's this whole discussion with regards to wanting to ensure that we preserve as much of our culture as we can. And I think one of the ways that we can help to preserve this thing is, our culture, is to also start to recognize that, you know, many years ago, we made the, it, it was mandated that, but, that both English and Chamorro were, were the official languages of the, of our island, and as much as we already provide many of our notices, public notices in the government, all in English, I, I believe that it's, it's time for us to be able to, in the preservation of our culture, in the perpetuation of our culture, but also to ensure that many of our Manamku, many of our people who have Chamorro as their, as their initial language, recognize and understand what of the proceedings that are going on within the government. Prompted me to, to, to be able to, to author this bill that would require that all notices paid for by the government of Guam shall be issued in both Chamorro and English. There have been some concerns raised, and the issues that was, as to whether or not, you know, agencies have the ability to be able to, to fulfill this mandate without any extra cost. You know, our government has got a number of different entities, instrumentalities, and, and there are other organizations that, that can assist government entities in being able to put together these notices for, for very minimal cost, and I would think that as time goes on, and this becomes a regular process of the, providing the notices, that this is just another part of doing business. It does not add to the extra cost. If it does act to the extra cost, it's the cost for us to be able to continue, to, to preserve and to perpetuate our, our, our language, and also to help to preserve and perpetuate our culture. So this is but a small means, a small step, but a significant step in being able to do so, so that it preserves our culture, but it also provides our people, those individuals within our community, who still have Chamorro as their primary language, to understand what's going on within the government. So with that, Madam Speaker, I ask my colleagues for their support on this legislation. I also want to thank the co-author, co-sponsor to the bill, Senator Tony Anna, for, for co-sponsoring this bill as well. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. On the motion, Senator Tai Tegui, you recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of Bill 373. You know, there, the private sector is making an attempt to, to protect our culture and our language. You know, they're spending money to make that effort, and you see it on KUAM at night, when they give the, the word of the day in Chamorro. You know, if you lose your language, you pretty much lose your culture. Without the language, without culture, there's no language, it goes hand in hand. So we must make every effort as a government, as the people who are out in the private sector, spending much money to ensure that the culture stays alive and the language stays alive. This cannot die. So we have to ensure that this happens, and I ask my colleagues, please, when you support this, you support Guam and Guam's culture, and we, it's the respect that we give our Manamku, our ancestors. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, Senator Palash's.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I support the intent of Bill 373, but there are some implications of this. For example, right now, this legislature itself, do we have, for example, a certified Chamorro writer to do this for us, when we, when we announce for a, a public hearing and, and other things? Again, do we have the capability to do that? The bill lacks effective date, at least there should be a transition, at the minimum, I guess, what, six months, so that we can be prepared. This is not, just simply put it in any kind of Chamorro language presentation, it has to be formal and acceptable, which, which would be actually the, the standard practice of Chamorro language. And so those are the things, and also there is, of course, the cost implication. If whatever that, anybody spend on an annual basis regularly to advertise or to publicize, then I think it's safe to assume that we have to, we will double that, because then now, we will have also the Chamorro side of it. Again, I support completely the intent of this, but there should be some, some discussion of that. If nothing else, at least it will provide an awareness to the people of Guam that, that that is how much it would cost, and at the same time, the, the agencies involved within the government would be prepared to be able to comply with the law. If this were to pass and effective immediately, I, I personally, I don't have the capability. I mean, I can write Chamorro, but is that an acceptable standard presentation? I don't know. We advertise in English, but of course, we all graduated with the, passing the English class, so I think that is safe and nothing else. At the minimum, it's certification that we can do the, the announcement. So those are the things that I, I, I consider Bill 373, the inadequacies of... the inadequacies of Bill 373, unless those things are incorporated, spelling out the, the, the standard, who can write and approve that, and of course, the effective date for the transition period, I think this would be a good bill. And I just want to share that I'm not offering an amendment. I'm just pointing out those, what I, I see as inadequacies of the bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Palashis. I have Senator Pangolinen next, then Munia Barnes, and then Tom Ada. Oh, and, well, you know, you, you.
Oi, Magaid. Aisa podi, ta spipia ikutura ni Chamorro, hobin gue, debilonanga yamku. Sidus maasi, senor. Estanu, ezi ma ngulu, gini gi mapus. Estanu makontradidisi lai, on tis di mapasa. Sa ipalabra niya, gifi nu englisa, zan lelenyasti, si tata na, ci lungi englis dan it Chamorro. Lo, abiba, abiba iisla, abiba i lingwahi, abiba i kutura. Ungan uwe kunguka to du sishai nu sinangan yasti man gatungu gini alum. Za ungan nu guasia meritun ezi ima saangan ni, misita takunsudera ko tanasiña, ko misisita lokui tanasiguru na, nu anta nahuzunge notisia gifi nu Chamorro, na dinanti na gifi nu Chamorro sa. Ambisi gifi nu Chamorro ti, ti tatutuhini tumugi ilingwahita fune nina. Man matugiin ilingwahita ni ginintautau sanhizong, ni man, man, man ungu, man mangi sahita, an parata atan man gininmanu, man ginin ezi i kuturahet ni, i sti ipalabra, nu ma ngokantai tasasangan huzung, zati tatutugi, zata iguenona man a akomprindit ginin isinenti, ta, an, an komentusi gifi nu Chamorro, vera di tahunguka fe lelenya, ta senti fe lelenya. Ini gi no na dongkulu para Guam diferensias ti gifi nu englis dan gifi nu Chamorro. An ginkomentusu gifi nu englis, pa dungkuntusi gifi nu englis, ungan siguru na sinyo komprendio, sinyo uhunguko, lo kulana makan para be senti afon keke sanganit. Lo an dungkuntusi gifi nu Chamorro ti mahpu de no, na turat na vera di uhunguko za nu komprendio, utungu hafa sinintetemus sa gi halung kurasonu, gi halu mititautautahu, gi halu tai manu mafatino su, gini gi tanu. An fumi nu chamomoro, siña u senti hafa unzasangan, unkeke sanganit. Za, misisita tanasiguru zata susteni, tanasiguru na tatzuli mo na esti na tiningo na sinenti na guinayza, an ginsi gi ta adbonsai mo na gini gi tempo. An ginsi gi matulaika itautau ni man mafatu gini gi tanota, gi tanu Chamorro, za atulalai kahit dididik, lo misisita ta, ta tai manu ni na sinyo ta tanasiguru, na ningayna tavan malefa ni esti. Parewa esti ilingwahi kutura, an gin tiun usa, an gin tiun na. Lala, parewa za ni esti machetinai. An tiun guasa, ti sinyo man utut sa nyanyu. Misisita na siguru, dong guaguasa za nu usa. Edun na siña kalaktus, sinyan nu man zaboo zatiun paku to di kanaimuni, nu ungoti machetin. Lo, parewa za ni lingwahi. An ginleta naani la kulana ezi monu ta, nu nonaya, nu gabesa ibintana ni esti ni patatogu esti, no, an, an gua no sumasangan ti be ta tu gini paogu zati eno esti bida danya. Maas esti, ah, spipia za ana maas fifit mi igima ti ibintana ha tanabunitu, na kuntui fundamentu, ifundation igima tanasigugu ru, na midgut dan magahit. Za sinyasusteni hit mo na gi, gi inanota, gini gi tanota, ikuturata itautauta. Sinyaman lihinget gini na klasengu ma, ni inajuda ni esti na, na prunaponi. Entungu anu, senior speaker na letakulan sinyatan na makkadi esti no lo, hatan malaja taspiyusit, tasstoria, ta taspiydi emplu, ni esti bisinuta dan man yinuta gini gi noti na marianas. An ginun atan i gaseta gi hulu gi zasaipan esti noti marianas no, anunatan itutisia ni man mapublikaka gini gi gaseta, ti un, ti unlingwahia ti gifi nu englisa, ti doslingwahi ti gifi nu Chamorro, englis dan Chamorro, na treslingwahi mauusan para nafan huzunge notisia, kuntu i lingwahin karalinan sa poti itautau karalinan gue, za i maaluk, ita taluk nu karalinan no, ezi i man ginin edzu na talu talukie gu palao, rafalisha. Manihita tautau edusia lokie ne. So anunatan no i notisia gue no, gua ma, ma publikaga gifi nu Chamorro, ma publikaga gifi nu englis, tamna gu, publikaga gi, eh, eh, lingwahin chamorilinan. Posita dosa taspiyasa ti man swetit na guaha otu lingwahita ni ezi kulana, nu, nu tautauta gini ni, ni, gini ni tautauta no ne. No, bunitu edzu uluan unatan i gaseta za unli'i. Za, enigi na sinyatan na maas lala ne sa sempre, ti tautautaha umaatan za muli'i na gaigi ilingwahita na mauusan huzung gi publiku na banda. Kuntui bisitaata sempre. Kuntu esisai military buildup, ni contractors, ni paogu sita mataita RFP sa kuntu nu Chamorro. No, pos kuntu esitautau sanhizong sempre tafanunu i, tanafanana gue, na guaha lingwahita gini gi tanota, zata tungu mo na sedbi, zata se sedbi. Za sempre marekognisa na, naani no sa ti, ti Guam or Americas, de begin sa nu i Guam, na guahan, guahan, tanu it Chamorro. Za, istigini atututungu, umatsa i yado ni para uinai tanu Amerikanu sa. Ungan, man potit man familia estani, mistio stodus unidos, lo guaha vera di eno, vera di eno gi pulitka na banda, gi ginin sto, ginin itautau za ni, za ni kutura, guaha otu klasin tautau vera di Amerikanu sumasagaku ini. Pa parewa za nsa lagu, guaha otu klasin tautau vera di Etaleanu, gua otu klasin tautau vera di nu i, i tautau Inglaterra sa, pa tautau Meksiko ni man gaigi gue pauguna. Na ita, gua ha gue tautauta no, no? Ezi ya maaluk ne itautauta no isu, i Creole, i Shesoni, ezi si American Indians. Za, man malilingu sta edzu lo hita, man swetit sa ti malilingu tabia, ta gogotia tabia ipuden esti i gubinota, za sinyatato gue ta iguini siana klasin lai, ni para tanasiguru na titafan mafnas gini gi tanota. Tanasiguru na ti uvan malefa i bisitaata, pa i atungota siya ni madisini na para tafan hita gini gi tanota, gi tanu Chamorro, nta tafan hita tafan man familia. Lo nyungayano van malefa ne na umarispetar, i hadz man gaigi gini gi fune nina, za man gagega na tempo. Za umarispetar za umatumu. Istigini sinyan ne na maas man akomprindit, ti chamulilian na, naani paogu ti sinyan man akomprindisa, ezi tumungu filmu Chamorro, Chamorra nu lingwahinya. Man maas man akomprindit sa vera di ilingwahi no, ta, ta, tanafanis kueku lasisiana vera di ilingwahia itautau guaha. Otu klasin tautau za debi diun, diun rekognisa no, debi diun ketungu hadzis tisiana tautau. Itanu Chamorro, it Chamorro, gini gi tanu Chamorro. Man ginin manu, hafa siatiningo nia, hafa kutura nia, hafa guinayza nia. Sa enigi ni sinyon tungu, na enigi na dzahu Guam sa guahas tisya. Ita da esti na, ta da, estisya gi otu le god. Ni sinyanu ta iguini ni man lala. Itautau za ni tanu ikutura ilingwahi. Pos edzu na gua, ungan dididik sempre gua gini nu minakad, dididik, misita hita lokui, gifi nu, i senior. Hitaloku sempre za ni sita ta, taspiyanyu za ta skuela, na skuela inmaiset tai manu nu, tumugi esti gifi nu Chamorro za ta fani skuela dididik. Lo, hungyo, fanhungi chadik, fanhungi fas, if you know, man uzingas. An gin tan, ta, ta pegasti no, sempre. Sempre antiguahu, pos gua tautautahu, pa otu ni, ni gain teres mina lagu, za, aspiyanyu na atungu mangi gifi nu Chamorro ni dinanti, idiletori to du, ni sinyan. Za, maas ta adbonsai mo na, maas ta abiba mo na. Abiba iisla, simparat. Abiba itautau simparat. Abiba ilingwahi simparada, abiba i kutura simparat. Pos edzu no, gogogo amzu na, ungan, dididik sempre letakano, nu, nu maas tu, tu para hita, lo putfabo, fan, fan magu, babakurason midu na nafan magim, za ngkatgasti na responsibidad. Sa gua bu unu beo katgasti na responsibidad para ti paraguawa, na para to di man Chamorro, ni man gaigi gini na hilu tonu intera mundo, za to di man Chamorro ni po fanta tati gi za hita an ginestaman maopusit gini. Za uma tungu, za fanbani dosu, za fan guaha gue na hania na Chamorra ta lu. Paogu, agupa, nagupa nia, za ni estaki mahpu esti na tonu. Sidus maasi, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolinen. And since we've started that role in terms of the elders before the younger generation, guy respetu si senior agun, pes biagang talif malaan finetnana, pes biagang si Senadora Tina Rose Munia Barnes. Pes maas amkotnia si senedot Tomas Ada, keni hago, pes hago maas utemu biagang. Okay, maalik. Pes Senadora Munia Barnes, o recognize ya.
Sidus maasi, Madam Speaker. Bicage esti ya, i, i jotaa ini fre si. Gini ma stakilu gi isanaku, ima stakulum gi kurasonu, za ni ma sfigu na ni sinahu urufes inmaisendu, pa ba u prutehi, za nu defendi inangi i kutura, ilingwahi, i ari, za ni hanam itanu Chamorro. Na ri rensa ku derechu gini esdu ustata, esti u afitma gi hilu i biblia, za ni bedaro ibandera hu, ibandera guahan. I say that with much heart, as you know that, Madam Speaker, that I was probably one of those students who were, who was told and who was raised not to speak the language. And it, its translation is really from the very essence of my intellect, the deepest within my heart and every fiber of my physical strength, I make this self-fulfilling promise to protect and to defend the beliefs, the culture, the language, the air, the water, and the land of the Chamorro people which are inherent God's given rights. This I will affirm on the Holy Bible and our banner, the Guam flag. And as I translated that, Madam Speaker, and I look at the bill before us today, and I look at the provisions of how a lot of what has come to play, I am reminded of why, one of the reasons why we must never forget. Because as I look at one GCA Guam code annotated in reference to the construction of what governs this government of Guam, there was a comment that was noted at one time back when, when the government code was first enacted in 1952, that there was a prohibition against the use of, by any government employee, the use of the Chamorro language and the writings and the speakings. And as we look at today of trying to revitalize and re-synergize and knowing that there is feeling and compassion among the, among the young generation today, that this is what they want, this is what they want to protect, this is what they want to preserve, this is what they want to keep close to them. And I'm humbled by the fact that I have a nineteen-year-old son, who, I mean, a twenty-year-old son who just celebrated his birthday the other day in another island because he's representing Guam. He has said to mom, to me, "Mom, what are you doing to try and preserve our language and our history and our land, and to protect our lands?" And I said, "Son, I, I continue to pledge that with what I try to do." And he said, "You know, Mom, in Chamorro," he said, "you can't even speak it." And I said, "Dispenso lahi lo aplinzu un komprendia, lo bezage dididik cada dia." And I said, "But I'm humbled and honored that you find it in your heart to try and protect who we are as an island people." So with that being said, Madam Speaker, and knowing that there is legislation today that will help and that will enhance the preservation of our language, I stand in full support. And just publicly, I'd like to say I thank my son for reminding me every day that we must never forget. We must always encourage our children and our grandchildren to speak, and we must protect our land. Sidus maasi, Madam Speaker, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Signing, maasi.
Thank you very much, Senator Barnes. I recognize Senator Tun Tomas Ada.
Ungan ezi manyatselik nu, panyalik lo magaid na amkotnia zu keni hamzu. Pes zangin punagang zu ni finetnanana onnu, nu i fana ni derechu ma agang Tun Tomas. Nu, lo nu magaidu suputi esti na laini mapropupuni, sa nu otu talu na oputinidat ni sinyata praktika ilingwahi. Lo, za magahit ezi letnya i, i senedot ginin barigada na, kalanteni ki na fan, na fan nu, eh, maagang nu, kalanapan luhanit dididik sa teniki maas nu, nu, kalangkompikau ni para ezi pomelakmu sa ezi, ezi sempu na notice ni sita paogun transloda pa gifi nu Chamorro. Staba ezi dosentuspesusa gi Pacific Daily News paogu, quatrusentuspesusa ni sita i man adobli i, i space ni man ni sita. Lo, tada gua zangin magaid na yotimondna zu maas nu para ma agradesi ilingwahi, za nu puedia nu itautauta ma tsuli tempo ni para ma, mataita, sa para maas nu, nu ma komprindi gifi nu Chamorro, pes, pes letku na balia edzu na, na klasin nu, nu investment. Nu, amparaguahu, magaid nu letku na maalika da tausha gifi nu Chamorro, ezi i, eh, dual language, uno gifi nu Chamorro, uno gifi nu englis. Lo, letku na benti maas nu tanabonsai mo na ilingwahi zangin, maas tausha gini gi pisu ne eslatura. Guahasu tati gi ontempu anigaigi gini si senedot Angel Santus. Magahit, megayna na man gifi nu Chamorro hit, guanabraina sukaa aplin. Lo, megayna braina man gifi nu Chamorro hit paogu, nu solu guaha biopu nu lingwahi na man gifi nu Chamorro hit, pa pu guaha biopu nu Chamorro land trust properties na ta, tausha ilingwahi, lo vera di edzu pura gifi nu englis. Lo, letku na maas inchijita zangin para magaid ta adbonsai ilingwahi, ni sita maas taspiha gi sanalomta ni. gi sanalomta ni para ta praktika. Mas ksha un sentin sa ni ni sidhuus maasi, madam speaker, keni zi, thank you ma'am. Pesh nu nu lekuna maasit nu nu tsago hinanauta zangin magaid ta tsagi maas tana pan maas inchiru hit ni para ta praktika i linguahi. Nu amparaguahu lekuna benti maas nu i linguahi nu nina fasu para pa bi pa bi songan dan pa bi praktika zangin huhungok hafa masasangan keni pa bi taitaya. Nu pesh bay usuputi esti sa ni suka mas ksha dididia para na zudamona pa na bonsa. Pesh bay bay suputi. Lo lekuna maasit nu tsago hinanauta zangin magaid ta tsagi nu pa praktika gini gi pisu. Za ni hunagi ni nu debitiu mama lo zangin kalana apling. Sa tu'ana kunto du gua apling. Lo nu lo inchimaas ta usa teniki nu maasit maas nu ban ma'lik mona ni ni i finu tamaoru. Sidhuus maasi, madam speaker.
Sidhuus maasi, madam speaker. Sidhuus maasi, puti enzina complimentu nu understandi paraguas. I would consider myself more in the middle age category. But madam speaker, esti ka basanga puti esti anegu na atan esti na finiponi hafa keke ce guiini. Ta keke keke susteni i kouturin, kouturan tamaoru zan i linguahi tamaoru. Zan igi maasi pantanti. You know, madam speaker, listening to some of the comments that were shared with us during the course of the last twenty, thirty minutes, and also listening to the author, I applaud the sponsors of this legislation. When it comes to our colleague from Barigada and our colleague from Sina'ania. You know, I think it's very commendable that they move forward with this particular measure. It brings to mind a proposal that I have presented and introduced maybe about four terms ago, five terms ago, that would have restored the names of our villages islandwide. And I literally used that term restored because I was corrected when in fact that legislation was initially being thought of and prepared. And I said, I was sharing with a number of individuals publicly that we need to correct the pronunciation and the names of our Tamaor villages. And several of our manomkus came up to me and said, "Boy, you're not correcting something, you are restoring something that should have stayed, it stayed with those names for the respective villages." And also during the course of that public hearing, madam speaker, we received a significant number of attendees who came out and opposed that legislation, questioning the intent behind that. And they were questioning, "Why is it that in this case, Senator Agun, you're proposing, whether it's correcting or restoring? And in my case, I look at it as restoring the Tamaor names for our villages. Why is it that you're attending to these rather than more important matters?" And my response at that time, and it became somewhat controversial, madam speaker, and I don't know if you or any of our colleagues in this hallway recall some of the discussion, but it became somewhat controversial only because from my perspective, I was looking at restoring and trying to preserve our language as much as possible. And one of the arguments that I had used at that time is that you can go to the state of Hawaii. When you go and you visit Hawaii and people greet you naturally, and they also extend a mahalo and all their local vernacular, their native language, you look at the signage for the individual streets, you look at the names of the respective jurisdictions, it's reflective of the native language in the state of Hawaii. And I use this as an example. And even with that statement or those statements, madam speaker, it was not heated to and it moved nowhere through this legislative process. Now you turn the clock several years forward and we have legislation that would mandate that government notices be issued both in Tamaor and English. You know, madam speaker, today, government notices can be issued in Tamaor and not necessarily in English. Today, government notices can be issued in English and not necessarily Tamaor. And I highlight that because English and Tamaor are both official languages of Guam by law. But here, our colleagues are taking it one step further and saying, at least from my perspective, "Look, we've got to continue to preserve and to promote the Tamaor language in this case." If this is what it's going to take to have that resurrection or that public outcry in terms of pushing and having a better appreciation of the Tamaor language, then absolutely. I stand in direct support of this because a few years down the road, madam speaker, it's more or less just allowing individuals in my generation and also individuals in the younger generation to perhaps be a lot more exposed to the Tamaor language as it applies here. I want to recognize, madam speaker, in addition to not only our two colleagues and some of the statements that have been mentioned, but there's one particular school, Escola en Hurra, that surfaced, I believe, about four or five years ago. And it was a brainchild of an individual that felt, she felt, Anne Marie Blas Artero, Arseho, I'm sorry. I stand corrected, and if it offends her for me bringing up her name, then I extend my apologies. But really, this is a direct recognition for her efforts as well as the efforts of all of the individuals that helped to sustain that program. Because since five years ago, they have had every single summer an immersion program where youth of today actively participate in that language, in the Tamaor language. And you know what's interesting, madam speaker, is the direct immersion. Because I was invited to one particular activity within that school, and every single instructor, every single staff member of that school spoke Tamaor. Regardless as to whether in fact you approached them and spoke to them in English, they would respond to you in Tamaor. And that's what the direct immersion was. I know that there were also a few other individuals in the community who have tried similar projects and programs. And I only mention Hurra because it continues to be very vibrant in terms of their ability to educate our people and encourage more of our young generation to be able to use the Tamaor language. I look at that and I say, "A lot more of that could be done. A lot more of that should be done." And this proposal, Bill Number 373, that's three zero, COR, certainly moves in that direction. You know, madam speaker, there have been some concerns about, raised about the costs. To me, I like to look at the other side of the equation. Yes, it may be slightly, require some slightly more, or it may require more financial resources to be able to comply with this proposal once it becomes law. But look at the other side of the equation. I was approached maybe about six years ago by several individuals, younger generation who came to Guam, they wanted to be from Palau, they wanted to visit Guam and just learn about some of the anticipated developments here on our island. And they visited my office, and one of the things they asked me is, "If there's anything that you would propose or recommend with developing the islands, in this case, the Republic of Palau, what would you suggest?" And my immediate response at that time, madam speaker, was, "I would encourage you as much as possible to continue to preserve your language and your culture." And they were kind of surprised that I would even say that. And I said, "Honestly, because you are looking at a product, an individual who was not exposed to the Tamaor language as much as I would like to, to have been. And I think that in your case, you and the people of Palau still find yourselves in an excellent position to continue to promote the use of your culture and the use of your language on a daily basis." And they understood after we had discussed some of the transitions here in our community. And one of the students, one of the individuals mentioned, and he said, "You know, you're right. I don't see too much of the Tamaor language being used even in print." Well, in this case, this would address one of those statements that was made by one of the students in high school who visited Guam from Palau about six years ago. Because this would now require that in fact, all of the notices for government meetings and activities moves in the direction of being printed in Tamaor as well as English. And you know, I share those experiences, madam speaker, because like my good colleague from, our good colleague from Barigada, our good colleague from Manyilau, and our good colleague from Ordut, du sokunu po finu tamaoru lo, a finu English dididik sa atungo nusapiti u comprendia falelengya. But I was really looking forward to our members and our colleagues here who can speak the vernacular fluently, to be able to share their perspective because it always gives me a greater sense of appreciation of what we see possibly going away. And this legislation would work on sustaining it and preserving it as much as possible. And for that purpose, and not only for myself, but for future generations, I certainly hope that they would all have that sense of appreciation of what the Tamaor language is and the meaning behind it and the natives and the traditions that are related to that. I want to close by saying this, madam speaker. You know, when I alluded to the previous legislation on restoring village names a little earlier, based on my previous experience, I found it kind of interesting that a proposal that would be, would have a tremendous amount of impact on our community in terms of preserving our Tamaor language and culture did not receive more testimony from people within the community. And I say that because I see that the chair of the committee had shared his sentiments about the proposal, the sponsor of the legislation had also shared his comments, and then we had a gentleman by the name of Mr. Garrido, and I'll use just their last names, also had added some comments in terms of supporting this legislation. And then also Mr. Wolfert. We know who these individuals are. And I commend them and I thank them for reaching out and extending their statements in support of this proposal. Because the way I see it, every single representative or resident of Guam, every single Tamaor really should have provided some form of comment and some form of testimony on this proposal. Because it would promote and preserve our language for future generations. And I certainly hope that this is only the beginning of perhaps more of what we will see in the use of the Tamaor language and also the perpetuation of the Tamaor culture in the years ahead. I would hate to see something that I grew up having a strong sense of appreciation. I would hate to see that in ten years, that everything transitions to a point where in fact, there's little sense of preservation and appreciation of our language and our culture. Because I believe that that's what continues to sustain each and every one of us as we look at living our respective lives. Thank you very much, madam speaker. And I once again extend kudos to the good senator from Barigada and the good senator from Sina'ania for having the initiative, taking the initiative to be able to introduce a legislation that I hope that perhaps is the beginning of many additional proposals that will promote the use of the Tamaor language and culture. O'doklo, sidhuus maasi.
Sidhuus maasi, Senator Agun. Bay riken exapago si senedot respisho, putfabot.
Sidhuus maasi, senora. Sidhuus maasi, luki hamzutoros. Tomoto kidzu pagu, lebe bisuputi lai finiponi tres, sheti tres, dash, trenta. Hafa ku mekeleklek, dash. Anyway, za u esti na lai finiponi. Lo gua dos na mistet ta atan mas, senora. Ifinetna, za esta u quintusi zan si senora speaker wampat ni pa bi aluk na, if you're going, that's where I'm going to stop. If you're going to require something like this, you know, it's a great thing. We have a gof bonitu i linguahi, i linguahi in Tamaor. Lo, but if you, if you don't have any centralized area that's going to make sure that these translations are accurate, I think will be hurting our culture more than helping it. And speaker and I are on the same wavelength. The sponsor agrees that there has to be some kind of centralized area that's going to receive these English, these announcements that are put in English and are going to have to do some kind of translations. And so I propose on page one, line thirteen, that after the word Guam, we insert the words "in consultation with the Tamaor Language Commission." And so that any department or agency, any governor of Guam entity, or even the legislature, anyone that's giving these Tamaor and English notice requirements shall have to provide the Tamaor Language Commission opportunity to make sure that these translations are accurate. And I, I know that they won't have a problem with this. I know in past years that the biggest frustration they had, madam speaker, is that when, when departments and agencies move forward in trying to celebrate our Tamaor language and our culture, they have the spelling wrongs and they have the whole thing wrong. And so that would be my first amendment.
Senator respisho, dispensalo. You know what, we don't have the amendment in writing, so if you can just repeat it.
Pape, repeatita'lu?
Yes, putfabot.
Manu ni malagopu.
Repeatit putfabot.
So after the words Guam, you would insert "in consultation with the Tamaor Language Commission."
Did everybody get that?
"In consultation with the Tamaor Language Commission." Page uno, página uno, line, I guess line thirteen, tressi.
Okay, did everybody get that? Are there any, anybody would like to speak on the amendment? Senor Agun, Senator Agun, putfabot.
Sidhuus maasi, madam speaker. I certainly stand in support of the amendment. It's okus concerned lai gini anegu atan esti ko guaha i commission Tamaor. Esta papagua? Sa utugano mata laika i naan para departmentun i Tamaor. It's now the Department of Tamaor Affairs, and I understand that the commission is now a subentity of that department. So my question is, is the Tamaor Language Commission still actively operating?
Ma'likerona kwestonsa, la ti zutatlu.
No, no, no.
No, the, it's correct. It was repealed, so we should say "in consultation with the Department of Tamaor Affairs, Department of Tamaor Affairs."
Okay, sidhuus maasi, madam speaker.
So I meant my amendment, madam speaker. So be in consultation with the Department of Tamaor Affairs.
Right. Okay, on that amendment? Are there any objections, no objection, motion carries?
And my next amendment, I'll leave it to the speaker since she's going to speak next. I want to thank you for allowing me to make this amendment. I want to thank the author for agreeing and our members, madam speaker, for agreeing that there really has to be some, some kind of centralized area that's going to make sure that when these notices are in Tamaor, that they're, they're spelled correctly and that they're done correctly. So that's the only way we can celebrate our culture is to be factually accurate. So thank you, madam speaker.
Bu'en puvetsu, Senator respishu.
Sidhuus maasi, madam speaker.
Bu'en puvetsu. Speaker wampat, putfabot, konsige.
Thank you very much, madam speaker. See, Tomas just looked around to see because I didn't speak Tamaor. Madam speaker, you know, I had to smile when I was up there when we started to deliberate on a bill. And I know, I'm sure the public is saying, "My gosh, it's such a simple bill." But yet everyone has, you know, chimed in and... But yet, everyone has, you know, chimed in and wants to contribute. But I, but I smiled because I really think that it's a wonderful thing. I see this as almost a revival, so to speak, of, you know, our culture, our language, our traditions, you know, and our way of life. And, and I, and I think that, it saddened rather, in the sense that it had to take so many years, 50 years later, 65 years later now, because we just celebrated the 65th year of, of our liberation. And it's, it's unfortunate that we really would need to, to mandate, you know, such a thing in terms of our notices that are being sent out. But it's also a good thing, because I think that it would make us feel a little bit more comfortable to, to use the language and not just speak it casually with our friends. And I speak it casually with my friends publicly. I don't, because I, I make a lot of errors. I'm not fluent in it. But it, I like it because it is our language that has been, I guess, suppressed for so many years. I'm one of those that actually, when I was in school, in elementary school and middle school, we were penalized, we were fined, you know, 10 cents a word. And, and that's my generation. And, and even when I was reading the final EIS last night, and the section of the culture, and, and they were, they hadn't recognized that, and it's so funny, because it's actually parallel with the war, I mean, and the liberation, that those who then were actually born during the war, you know, all speak the language. And that would be all of my sisters, brothers and sisters above me, who actually speak the language fluently. And then those of us born after the war, don't. And, and that's because there was this unspoken rule everywhere else, with the exception of the school where you are penalized. And, and you, and I don't know if any one of you still remember, at one time, there was actually a company here in the island that wanted to prohibit their employees from speaking in their vernacular. And unfortunately, and I'm not saying this was Chamorro, but there were a number of workers in this particular company that then were, were told by management that they are not to speak in their language and they are to only speak in English. And it's, you know, edicts like that, I suppose, on the worksite, or at schools, or anywhere else, that you cannot speak, you know, the language. Madam Speaker, I've been fortunate, as a member of APIL, to actually attend the different meetings that we've had in our island, other island entities. And in attending, of course, those meetings, there's always a presentation of, you know, some of their, their culture and, and their traditions, you know, at the culmination of, you know, our meetings. And, you know, it always saddens me that when I, I listen and I watch all this, that there, everyone, including the little children, are able to speak in their language, and they have made, you know, efforts in making sure that it continues. And most recently, like you mentioned, I know your son was at the Games, the Micronation Games in Palau, and I had met the, one of the queens of, of the island, and she told me that she started a school of cultural performers, and that her whole goal was to make sure that she teaches the children the traditional dances and, and songs versus some of the modern ones that, you know, has changed through times. And there was some demonstration of, of that type of dance in the evening of the president's dinner during the, the Micronation President Summit. And there were these group of young children who were brought in to perform, and although they were singing in their language, the dances were a little bit more modern, and they did an interpretation, a modern interpretation. And because of what she saw, she had assured me that on the next day, which is the opening of the Micronation Games, is that we would really see a traditional song and dance. And, and, Madam Speaker, I have to say that, you know, I became so envious, of course, of, you know, these different island entities who have gone to that extent to protect, you know, their language and culture. And, and I am beginning to see us doing the exact same thing. And although, yes, it may be 65 years later, it's really better late than never. And I'm also recognizing that a lot of our young children are, are coming home and wanting to, to find out where they came from, want to, want to, to learn the language. And I say the same thing as well for even my own children trying to, to learn that. So there's a lot of awareness now and a lot of appreciation, and we are really making this, you know, full circle, and, and I like it. And, and the way our members have been responding just this afternoon is an indication that already, you know, we're, we are very supportive of this. I wanted to know that when we started out the deliberation on, on Bill 373, immediately my office had already prepared, as a matter of fact, a sample already in Chamorro, an announcement of a public hearing. So I make this available as well for you, because I'm very fortunate to have in my staff as well, you know, Ed Pukaiwi, who's able to, who speaks the language fluently, and Rollin as well. And honestly, when I travel with those two every day, they speak to me and, you know, to teach me then how to, to speak. So I'm, I'm very appreciative, you know, of that, of those two gentlemen for helping me as well, perfect and polish my, my Chamorro speaking ability. So, Madam Speaker, you know, we, we always say that we want to be able to do some of these things, but I think we have to start thinking Chamorro first, you know, and then English. So if I may, on page two, line 16, that, you know, and I'm really very appreciative to, to Senator Blas when he rewrote this, because, and I checked throughout the bill and he said that, you know, things be printed both in Chamorro and English, and he always started out Chamorro and then English. And I really like that. But in page six, page two, in line 16, now when the time comes for us to actually print, I would like to see that it be printed in, in Chamorro first, then translated into English. So that's my amendment on line 16. Be printed in Chamorro first, followed by a translation in English. Because then, it would really force us to read it first. It'll have both, but the very top will be in Chamorro, and then the bottom, right below it, will be in English.
Speaker?
I'm, I'm sorry?
Inukul, disi, disi sa?
Yes.
Page two?
Page two, line 16. Printed, you know, both in, I mean, printed, move the both, but printed in Chamorro first, and then followed by a translation in English.
Did everybody follow that? Line 16, page two, printed in Chamorro first, and fol, and...
Then followed.
Then followed...
By the translation.
By the translation.
Can you translate that in Chamorro, please?
Dispensa, Speaker Wampat, por favor. Faisen si, Senator Tomas, por favor, translado gi finut Chamorro. Por favor, sagi. Saaki?
Printzu, afak printzu. Matugi, fenet nana gi Chamorro, pues, pu machenzlade in English.
Gi finu English. Okay. Un comprende todo? Okay? Ko gua objection? Ko tata? Motion carries. Afak motion carries gi finu Chamorro. Speaker Wampat? Estemnata? Okay. A point of inquiry, Senator Ada, consigui.
Nu, esti i requirement ni para ta publika i, you know, zangin gua ha public hearing para hafana meeting, estina lai, purpupuni, nishita pagu ta publika gi finu English and finu Chamorro. Lo, magahit, sina, matzoguino zangin ta apashi i gazeta ni para ma, zii advertisement kashi, fanan kashi kana 400 pesos ni, ni, pez, zangin ta apapashi zuna space ni, pez sina tasnoni hafa, tamanu para ma, ma tugi advertisement. Lo, imanagahit, nu, pudi, pudi kalantataza salapi gi budget, nu, ti sesu na usai zuna klosin ni pa ma publika, pues, nu, pabi laknuzim fomashon, pudi junta, u, tugia nu kata i guatu gi gazeta, sa usanongi gi finu English na para gua ha ginina, na dia, zangin ina ora para gua ha junta ni poro mahungok, i hafana bill ni para ta diskuti. Lo, ko, estilo ke na, na lai ni ma purpupuni ko, zangin u tugi todi dos gi finu English and finu Chamorro, siguro na, ti sina tasnoni gazeta na, na para ma publika todi dos linguahi, teni kisi ha ma tsuli hafa, mon nu, ma, inasunia para ma simputanti ni poro famanungo todi tau tau pudi junta, pues, nu, magahit, ne na, lakuna esti na lai ni ma purpupuni, pez benti pudi zoi ma apapashi na advertisement. Lo, gua ha zii ma aluk public service announcement, nu, na ya guatu kata, pez, yusli edzu, na klosin nu anunshu, nu, ana satisfetu ilai ni nishita para ta publika, singku dia shuzum antes di i junta, pues, ta'lu dos dias antes di ni manimpovan et nun. Nu, pues, nu, pabi, pabi na sigura na ma comprende na, na, na benti zii anunshu, ne ti, ti todu benti esti na, nao para kinubri, sa solu ta apapashi i advertisement. Pues, zangin, pagu zangin otu itin, itin somu na para kun todu zii public service announcement nishita pabi tugi pagu gi kata, gi finu English and finu Chamorro, pues, pues, benti nishita ta na mas kloru ino gin. Ungan magahit, esti ya ginigi pahina dos gi paragraph section otso A103C, like na public service announcements. To do public service announcements ni matutuhun ni agencia, po ma laknuzki finu Chamorro dan finu English. Pez, ziki, magahit, na fananu u opin maisha zu i kuestonu, na gaiga ginina, kume kili na zangin u katadzi guatu i gazeta, pez, nishita be katadzi bo, todi dos na linguahi.
Senator Blas?
Sidoos maasi, Madam Speaker. Lo, magahit, si, isni, concern, lo... First off, and I want to thank the, the, our legal counsel, just for the edification of all the members of the, of the body here. The law, the way it's written today, provides that we can submit all of our announcements in Chamorro. And that if we want to, we can provide the English translation. What, and, and with regards to what the news providers will do with the public service announcement, granted and recognizing that it is, first off, it's a, it's a, it's a free thing, they may choose to, to choose one or the other. But let's give them that option. I agree that, you know, that we, and as much as, quite honestly, I would like to be able... First off, I tell you, Madam Speaker, this, this, this bill was actually supposed to go, go further than this. This bill was gonna actually mandate that any public service announcements, or any public announcements, be also provided in Chamorro, be spoken in Chamorro. I went to a popular shopping center. I heard public service, I, I heard the, the public announcement in, in Japanese, in Chinese, in Filipino, and in English. And I sat there and I waited for the Chamorro version. And so really, this was supposed to go that, further than that. And it probably will, probably will down the road. But recognizing the limitations and what we can do in government, and take the steps towards that goal, is providing, again, that it becomes a mandate. That it is mandated. That at least from the, from, from, from the government side, that it is provided in Now, as was stated earlier by one of our colleagues, there are many island businesses that have already actually gone ahead of the government. And maybe by this step, we can do something cooperatively, collaboratively with, with, with the private sector, in being able to perpetuate it and continue it. So I recognize and I understand the concern. And yes, to be able to answer this, as, because it's a public service announcement, the news organization or the organization to be able to pass that out has a prerogative. But it is not the, is a mandate that it also, it is also provided in Chamorro by the government entities. So I hope that answers the question and the concern. And I recognize, and he, again, si tun, tun Tomas was right. Magahit si tun Tomas.
Sidoos maasi, Senator Blas. Komalika, eno, Senator Ada? Bueno? Okay, before we move on to Senator Guthers to speak, I'm gonna go ahead and bring attention to Speaker Wampat, if I may, based on the amendment that you made on subsection C, page two, line 16. There are probably corresponding amendments that may need to be made on line seven and 25 and 30.
So we would need to have then a general motion, then, that legal counsel, then, the, you know, make all these, you know, technical, then, corrections to, to align, then, this amendment with other sections in the bill, like you said earlier, line seven on page two, that that same language also is reflected there as well. So is, is that okay, legal counsel, then?
Okay. On that motion, are there anyone wishing to speak on that amendment? Are there no? Oh.
Uh, the amendment?
The general amendment to make technical corrections to make sure that other sections is reflected.
Okay.
Are we done with the discussion on the original amendment?
Yeah, long time.
No, no, because you said add the word first, and then Congress, and then Thanks.
I was trying to ask you speaking. Yeah, then come to ask for translation in Chamorro.
But the question was not asked of the Chair.
Yes. Senator Espodan, if I may, Speaker Wampat, when the, when the motion, when the motion was made from Speaker Wampat, there was a request by Senator Ada to speak to, to translate it in Chamorro. The translation was made, there was no objection, the motion carried. And then there was a point of inquiry by Senator Ada. Senator Blas answered it. Senator Ada was good with it. I went back to Speaker Wampat to ask her to make the correlating amendments based on what she made on line 16, and that's where we're at right now. So we're on that motion to make that technical change. So we're on that motion to make that technical change. And are there any objections? Anybody wishing to speak? No objections? Motion carries. We're still on the main motion. I do now have Senator Guthertz put fobot, Consigui.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This is on the, the, the bill itself?
Senora, senadora.
Thank you. Buenos, federal hamja. You know, it's very interesting, ah, to see this bill. I think it's a good bill. There are a couple things we need to keep in mind though, Madam Speaker, and that is, there will be a cost associated with this. And we discussed earlier, ah, identifying the, I believe, at the Chamorro Language Commission as a body to assist in, ah, determining the appropriateness of translations. Am I correct, Madam Speaker?
Can you go ahead and repeat that?
Yeah, the Chamorro Language Commission has been given a responsibility in an amendment to assist in ensuring that the translations are appropriate?
Yes, the correction was instead of the, there is, today exists the Department of Chamorro Affairs, which would be the entity that will, will receive this.
Okay, well, just a couple points, and I hope that, ah, we may have to come back in the future to assist them because there probably going to be a cost involved here. With a significant increase in, ah, the nature of announcements in both languages, there'll be a need for translations and for verification of the translations in accordance with the proper, ah, language utilization. And I'm sure the Department of Chamorro Affairs is going to need some support. One called upon to assist in this endeavor, and I think we should help them. So I think there should be a consideration in the future for some funding to the Department of Chamorro Affairs to assist with this. In addition, I, I thought about this, this may create a whole new area of, of providing employment for, ah, those in our community that are versed in the proper orthography of the language in writing, and not just orally but also in writing, in written Chamorro. Ah, it would not be, ah, beyond thought that perhaps our media, particularly our print media, may need to have someone on board that can assist advertisers as well as those that are providing, ah, ah, government announcements and public service announcements with, ah, the proper, ah, translation from English into Chamorro in order to produce the, ah, the dual-language announcements. So that could be a good opportunity for our people, and that's something that, ah, we perhaps can look forward to. In a broader sense, Madam Speaker, you know, with this military buildup, ah, I think it's important that we create a consciousness that Guam is a little different from other places in the United States, that our people, our indigenous people have an indigenous language that has withstood hundreds of years of colonization and foreign participation in our community, and that that language needs to have a place of prominence in our community. So I think this is a very important initiative, and I commend the author for it. It's a very good beginning, and I'm hopeful that we can do other things. Examples are, Madam Speaker, ah, you know, the signage in Tumon along Hotel Row. And I think this is probably in violation of some of our existing signage laws, but some of those signs are not in English. But they're in foreign languages, Asian languages. And, ah, we need to look at that. I'm concerned that, ah, prominence is occurring with languages other than languages authorized by law in Guam, and the enforcement of our existing laws has not been very good here. Why can't we have language in the vernacular as well as in English, even in Tumon, along Hotel Row? So I'd ask my colleagues to think about that, that since we're looking at this, we need to get the signage laws in Guam in place to also honor our vernacular as well as the English language. And maybe we should reevaluate what we're seeing down in Tumon. A lot of these businesses that display signs other than English are offering services, some of you describe them as blue light services, that are directed at our tourists primarily. Now, if you visit neighboring islands that have this problem, I think this has created serious problems in the CNMI, particularly in Saipan. There's an area in Saipan where almost all the signage is, is in Chinese. And, ah, when you go to that particular area in Saipan, you wonder, what is, where are we? Is this Saipan or is this somewhere else? So we're seeing some of that here on Guam in our tourist belt. And I think we need to get that stopped and to have a uniform, ah, policy in place such as this one that we might be able to expand later on. I support this bill. I think it's important. We need to do everything we can to ensure that Guam's unique identity, including the language, is reinforced wherever we can do that. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Buen fobeto, Senator Guthertz. Are there anyone else wishing to speak? Senator Respecho?
Suzusmaosi, um, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I know my amendment just passed where it would have in consultation with the Department of Chamorro Affairs. I'm asking if we can expand that to say, in consultation with the Department of Chamorro Affairs translator or Department of Chamorro Affairs certified translator. And if there's been objections, um, I'd like, um, to offer that, ah, as, as clarification amendment we just adopted.
Ah, Senator Ada, you recognize in Senator Respecho's amendment?
I just want to, um, ah, get clarification. Does that mean then that we cannot issue that, um, announcement or that, or, or that notice until it has been certified as being correct by?
No, it's a certified translator, not for them to certify. It still preserves the intent where they're going to have to consult the Department of Chamorro Affairs, but, um...
So that means that the timeliness of how soon I can get out my public service announcement will be dependent upon the availability of service by that certified translator?
Senator Respecho, would you like to respond based on that?
We just want to make sure that, ah, in the interest of making sure that the translation is accurate, that it be the Department of Chamorro Affairs translator or Department of Chamorro Affairs certified translator?
No, I, I understand that part, but, but does that mean that I have to pass that box before then I can transmit it to the media?
Senator, Senator Respecho, based on his inquiry, um, on the last statement, said, would you care to answer?
Yeah, I, I understand, um, that concern, but what I'm asking the body to help me clarify my amendment doesn't change what we already adopted, because I just said, in consultation with the Department of Chamorro Affairs, who in the Department of Chamorro Affairs is going to be able to provide this, um, translation? And so I'm saying it should be Department of Chamorro Affairs certified translator, so it's clear who will be assigned this mandate. Now, whether or not they would able, be able to churn these things out so that we would meet the public hearing, um, notice requirements. Imagine, Madam Speaker, once we start doing these things, um, regularly, like the notice of the time, the place, and everything, it'll just, um, it'll just be a lot quicker.
Be a template.
Yeah, it'd be a template.
Um, thank you, Senator Respecho. On that, um, does that answer your question, Senator Ada? Okay, Senator Aken, you're recognized on Senator Respecho's amendment?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly stand in support of the, ah, the additional amendment to the original amendment, only because back experience, ah, there have been certain translations provided out of my office on a few occasions and then representative from the University of Guam, rightfully so, from the Chamorro Studies Division, would come back and try to make some additional corrections. And as, as an authority, whether it's Department of Chamorro Affairs or any other entity within the government of Guam, we need to ensure that there's consistency and there's correction, correctness in terms of how these, ah, I guess, notices are given out. Also, another thing that is, ah, I want to just share an observation because the two individuals that the good speaker has available within her office are both from Jonya, and I can certify that, in fact, they know how to speak Chamorro, but that certification doesn't carry it through to the Chamorro Language Commission. So I just wanted to, to mention that, only because they both originate from the wonderful village of, of Jonya. But aside from that, um, perhaps the concern coming from one of the previous speakers can be addressed by virtue of, of the use of a general template that can be established from these particular certified Chamorro translators so that the legislative body can collectively utilize that as a general dissemination of information. But then again, it always comes down to the exact language per legislate, legislative proposal. And that's what, you can have a general template, but you have four or five bills that are going to be publicly heard, the four or five bills have to be translated into Chamorro. So that's going to be certainly an, an issue that may, perhaps, ah, this body would have to deal with in terms of providing timely notification, especially in an expedited fashion that we're used to in terms of requests from each of our colleagues. So I just wanted to share that with you, Madam Speaker, but I stand in support of this because really, there's got to be one central clearinghouse so that if there's any responsible, responsible entity that, in this case, the Department of Chamorro Affairs, their certified translators will be the appropriate authority in terms of providing these notifications. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Si Suzusmaosi, Senator Aken. On the Respecho amendment, are, are there anyone else wishing to speak? If not, any objection? No objections? Senator, ah, Speaker Wampat, you're recognized on, ah, the Respecho amendment?
Oh, no, it's done. Oh, it's not done?
It's not done. I was waiting for you to finish with legal counsel, to see if you wanted to make an, any amendments or to speak on the motion.
No, but, ah, on, on the Respecho amendment, Madam Speaker, I do support it, and, and I, I understand the concern that although we may be, there might be limited number of individuals in, ah, either the Department of Chamorro Affairs or the, ah, the, ah, division of Chamorro Studies at the Department of Education, you know, where those individuals will be able to assist by providing, ah, you know, the, the translation or to actually possibly just review what we've written. And at the same time, you know, as I stated earlier, is that, um, I do have, you know, and fortunately in my office, two individuals who are proficient, you know, in Chamorro language in speaking and, ah, writing that, you know, for now at least, you know, I, I have them in my employment that, ah, they're available to assist, you know, our members here, so I offer that as well to, to our colleagues, so...
Speaker Wampat, are you going to prefer an amendment to Senator Respecho's amendment to include the legislature as a part of that translation?
Yeah, in, in discussing with, um, legal counsel, I think what, what my clarification amendment does, it kind of broadens it so that there's more people that would be able to provide this, ah, service. So in this case, the Chamorro Affairs can certify people to be, ah, certified Chamorro translators. And so that would address the speaker's concern that if any one of her staff, um, is a, someone who's able to do that, they'd have to go through the Chamorro Affairs and, and be certified, and then they can provide that service. We have someone in our central staff as well, Maria, who's able to provide that kind of service. And Nevis also, so we have that capacity to do that, but we just got to make sure they're certified.
Madam Speaker, point of inquiry?
State your point of inquiries.
I just need to go back to what Senator Respecho's amendment specifically is, I mean, word for word. Because, I mean, you know, make sure we understand, because the, the discussion now is expanding and to include other members, so now I want to bring back what exactly is the original amendment?
I'm going to go, Senator, um, Espaldon, I will have Senator Respecho, ah, repeat his amendment because it's not in writing right now.
Right.
And it is in addition to the previous amendment that was already approved by this body. Senator Respecho, please go ahead and repeat that.
My original amendment that was already adopted says, on line, ah, 13, page 1, it says, after Guam, says, "In consultation with the Chamorro Language Commission." What I'm asking the body for consideration is to say that, ah, that amendment should be clarified to read in consultation with the Department of Chamorro Affairs translator or Department of Chamorro Affairs certified translator. So, so we, we, we could still run our, our, our public, um, announcements through the Department of Chamorro Affairs, or what we could eventually see happening is the Department of Chamorro Affairs can certify individuals who currently work within the, ah, various, ah, government departments and agencies who can provide this service anyway, so they'll be certified. And so it just broadens the, the number of people that would be able to provide this service to avoid any backlogs and inability to put these, ah, public notices out.
Thank you, Senator Respecho. Senator Espaldon, does that answer your inquiry?
Ah, not, not clearly. I mean, I'm sure he answered my question, but I just didn't get it. Because as I understand, ah, Madam Speaker, that the initial amendment was, ah, to provide the words, "in consultation with the Chamorro Language Commission."
Department?
Well, and then now, the new amendment, I guess, and, and he explained it, but I, I didn't really catch it.
The new amendment was?
So the, the new, ah, the new word-for-word verbiage would be?
Department of Chamorro Affairs.
In consultation with the Department of Chamorro Affairs?
Yeah, or, or the Department of Chamorro Affairs certified Chamorro translator.
Cer-, ah, ah, certified translator?
Yeah, certified translator. So what that would do?
Right, ah, Madam Speaker, yeah, no, I, I understand, just, I just want to clarify what the wording is because is that, are we then saying that in consultation with the Department of Chamorro Affairs or Department of Chamorro Affairs certified translator? In essence, that mean, were we striking the words Chamorro Language Commission? Is that, is that, is that the new amendment?
Point of information, Madam Speaker, if I may.
One moment, please. Point of information, Senator Aken?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I believe the insertion of Department of Chamorro Affairs was already adopted.
Yes, it was.
So it's amending that portion, that the Chamorro Language Commission is no longer being considered. So that word, Department of Chamorro Affairs is, was already acted on by the body.
You are correct. Senator Espaldon? It was?
Okay, so the Chamorro Language Commission was, was repealed, and instead what came out was, "in consultation with the Department of Chamorro Affairs or Department of Chamorro Affairs certified translator."
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and I just, I just wanted to make sure I understood what was going on.
The proper name for the department.
Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker.
Okay, on the, ah, Respecho amendment, I'm going to, ah, ah, recognize Senator Palacios. Consigui.
Situs Massey, Madam Speaker. Ma'uligi zuna amen meni si Senator Respecho. Gagi na anoi luga nae zan anoi to di agenisha kada, kada departamentu. And aki sina man man higher, jama stadik isibishu, jorre komemenda na istinas, isile legislature dangin parata na mos man efisine zotapali hewing, danas esita unu uman playa gwinie, osino unu nista man playa, zagaikapa sidat ne no ne, donisita uma certifica ni Chamor Affairs. Gini na man tagano na me la manhitak gwinie ne, sa wa atan esee dangin ta'za capability gwinie gi legislature ne eno, mostin pu senpi, tanoi ni parata anunsha, o misiti singku dia sa ne gwanai, i mina sah diaz, gwanai manak mangkarirai pata kega sa izu, kasteri poku dangin pata nangka vina ina, ko maksepta it interpretation ni Chamor Affairs ona, lo dangin gaiki gwinie, tad kumua masasangan si tan meriagui watu, mos sina ma cho'chusti zan luki istina amen meni si Senator Respecho, anoi roke pumalu agency gi entero gi gomu no Guam, para kisi na man man train unu, zasi na man 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 afan certify unu gi zasi ne, sa ngana para un departamentua, nu pro, ino oki to duste antire mapubika, pues poreno na rason ma'uligi, mosin, mosin na kabalis, zan mosina midgut istina nabiu. Situs Massey, Madam Speaker.
Haguma sa Senator Palacios, boi puvetsu. On the Respecho Amendment, are there any other speakers? Senator Respecho, would you like to close on your amendment? Dispense out?
Speaker has to.
Oh.
Speaker Wampat, por favor. Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I mean, there's everything to consider. I realize is that, one, yes, if it was just the Department of Chamor Affairs, and then for them to certify, let's say, the four individuals that we currently have in the legislature, at least that I know of, that it not be limited only to the Department of Chamor Affairs to certify these individuals, but we also have the Chamor Studies that can also do the exact same thing. The important thing, I think, here, rather than maybe to say, just to limit it to just them, because then we do have the Chamorro Language Program at the University of Guam, is that, that so long as they are certified Chamorro translators, I think that that, you know, would kind of solve this in terms as to where we would have to go, you know, to be able to get assistance to review what we have written or what we want printed.
Okay. You know what, I'm going to, I'm going to take a 10, I'm going to take a 10-second recess, just so we can get clarification.
Ten seconds.
The Division of Chamor Studies or the Chamor Language Division in the Department of Education. There are individuals who work and teach as instructors and as professors at the University of Guam. Those are all individuals that could ultimately receive certification down the road so that they can be recognized as an authority with their certificate. And I think that in this particular case, although I understand the desire to provide as much flexibility as possible now, I think it should evolve to really a government entity being able to be the recognized authority for certifying these individuals. And it goes back to what my initial statements were, Madam Speaker, in this presentation, is that the Chamor Language Commission, many years ago, and I was working in an office that was situated right next to the Chamor Language Commission, came out with a particular translation, and not too long after that, a representative and instructor out of the University of Guam Chamor Studies Division stepped forward and questioned the validity of that particular translation. So there are going to be situations, Madam Speaker, that perhaps the spelling of Ungan may be different in one translation versus another, although they have the same meaning. And I think that we really need to move in the direction of having one unified centralized authority that can provide that certification, not disregarding all of the other wonderful personalities and individuals that are already teaching it in our public schools, individuals that are being instructed or getting educated at the University of Guam, or individuals that work in the Department of Chamor Affairs. I think it's perhaps about time that we get all of our people to go through a certification process. And I believe UOG does provide some certain level of certification before they actually teach at the University of Guam or at the Department of Education, but I'm not too familiar with the specifics of these programs. But I wanted to share that concern because I think that in the end, we really need to establish a mechanism so that in fact, the two individuals that worked that were highlighted a little earlier can be certified, so that there would be the direct recognition that they can speak, they can translate English into Chamor, and they will be an authority from that particular perspective. So I do have reservations. I will not oppose the amendment, Madam Speaker, but I certainly hope that over time, that things would evolve so that in fact, we have a central certification entity within the government of Guam that can, keep in mind that that entity could be certified, and all these other individuals that work at DOE, all these other individuals that are educated and instruct at UOG can be part of that certified pool of people, resources that can translate English into Chamor. And that, I think, is perhaps the process that should be implemented over time in terms of trying to properly promote the use of the Chamor language. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Uggan. So there was a reconsideration. There's a reconsideration. There's no objection to the reconsideration? You need to withdraw the amendment now. Sorry, Speaker. Senator Respechel, you're still recognized. The reconsideration was granted. Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, it's kind of weird because I don't disagree with anything that the previous speaker said, and the goal really should always be to have a one central authority to make sure that these public notices are done accurately. But also, what the overall intent of the bill, as I understand and I support it, is to celebrate the language and our culture. And if we do have staff members, or if there are members within the departments and agencies that can speak Chamor, then we should celebrate that. But to do the opposite, where we're going to have these translations generated at our level, or in the departments and agencies level, then have to wait for some one at the Chamor Language Commission to okay's to whether or not that translation is correct, can you imagine the kind of, as the previous speaker pointed out, the kind of public pressure, the political pressure just in the fact that are you a U or a O? And that issue has yet to be resolved yet. Do you spell Chamor with a U or Chamor with an O? So if we have the University of Guam certifying these Chamor speakers, it might be with a different autography than if we have the Chamor Language Commission do that. So we don't want to bottleneck that, and I don't want this amendment to bottleneck the whole idea of wanting to celebrate the uniqueness and the beauty of our language. So I thank my colleagues for the reconsideration, and at this time, I move to take out that amendment that would require in consultation with the Chamor Language Affairs.
On that motion to delete that portion of the Respechel amendment in consultation, that would be on line...
No objection.
No objection. Motion carries. Ouch. Okay, before I... Are there anyone else wishing to speak? I know...
On what?
On the main motion.
Yes, the main motion.
Yes. Yes. Speaker Wampat, I know you spoke earlier, but I'm going to give you the opportunity to finish.
Amendment. So now on the main motion.
No, that was on... Okay.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I do have an amendment that I'd like to offer our colleagues, and let me just read it, and if you really think it's something that we would need to make copies for our members, I will.
Please proceed.
But what I've actually have here is that I've quoted Section 706.0 on official languages, where it says English and Chamor are the official languages of Guam, provided however that the Chamor language shall not be required for official recording of public acts and translations, and that continues to stay on. But after that, this is the amendment that I want to add on to it. However, all public service announcements, PSA, initiated by any public agency shall be issued and printed in Chamor, and public notice of agency meetings published pursuant to 5 GCA Chapter 8 shall be in Chamor. Then we won't have this Chamor English, but only in Chamor for PSAs and meetings.
Speaker Wampat, do you have that amendment in writing? If we can just make copies, I'm going to just take a 10-second recess. Recognize Speaker Wampat on her amendment. Every one of you, you should have received a copy. The Sergeant Arms is passing it. Speaker Wampat? Okay. Are there anyone else wishing to speak on this amendment? If not, are there... Senator Espaldon on Speaker Wampat's amendment, and then we'll recognize Senator Uggan.
I just want to make... Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just want to make sure I understand this amendment, and this is basically to add a new section to Section 706, of which, let's see, I believe that Bill 373 that we've been speaking to is... Is it, or is it not a part of? I'm not really sure. I'm sorry? This is a whole new section?
It's Title I GCA. I read that earlier.
Okay, this is Title I.
Title I GCA.
Right. And basically now, it says, the amendment says, "However, all public service announcements initiated by any public agency shall be issued and printed in Chamor," and "Public notice of agency meetings published pursuant to 5 GCA Chapter 8 shall be in Chamor." I guess the question is, does that mean that it no longer is requirement, I mean, that it is only going to be in Chamor as opposed to even an English translation? I would have to ask the author of the amendment that...
I'll go ahead and yield to the speaker, but I would assume it would be both. Speaker Wampat, would you care to answer that inquiry?
Well, Madam Speaker, yes, it will be issued and printed in Chamor for both PSAs and other agency meetings, but it definitely does not prohibit us to do, like I said earlier, in Chamor first and then followed by a translation in English.
So, and I just want to make sure I'm clear on this, because somehow, I'm getting the impression, at least in my own mind, that the way this is written would basically mandate that the public service announcements shall be issued and printed in Chamor, even though English is also recognized along with Chamor as the official languages of Guam. However, it seems to me that through this amendment, it will be only printed in Chamor. And the public announcements, public notice, it says, "Public service announcements initiated by any public agency shall be issued and printed in Chamor." It doesn't, I would take to mean that that does not preclude that it could be printed in English, but it doesn't necessarily have to be printed in English. Is that correct? Okay. And then, "Public notice of agency meetings published pursuant to 5 GCA Chapter 8 shall be in Chamor, but not necessary in English." Is that a correct statement, too? Madam Speaker, I would have to, I would have to at least caution this body that even, there are many even, there are even many Chamoros who do not read Chamor. And so, if the intent of the public notice is to inform as many of our people as possible to restrict it to only an option of Chamor in which perhaps only, it will be printed only in Chamor, does not really afford those in the general population the ability to be notified in a language that they understand, and we're talking about even the Chamor people who do not read Chamor. And so, I have a problem with that, because again, the intention of giving a public notice is to inform as many people as possible about a possible meeting or whatever is being announced for the public service benefit. I, you know, I hesitate to say I can support this, because again, the intent of notice is to allow everybody and as many people as possible, residents, whether you're Chamor, whether you're, or otherwise, to be informed of what's going on in the government and what meetings are coming up and what public announcements are being said. So if it is left at the option or discretion of just anybody, and if they're trying to exclude a good number of people from a meeting or being notified, knowing full well that there are many people on this island, and Chamor is included, who do not read Chamor, then I think that this would be definitely detrimental to the approach of trying to notify our public of what's going on. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Is that in opposition?
It's, well, it's definitely a major concern. Whether I have an amendment at this time, I'll have to at least give it a little bit of thought in terms of how do we craft, how to craft that language to basically, again, come in conformity with the intention of the author of this amendment, of making sure that we really promote the Chamor language, but again, but not defeat the intent of public notice. If only 10% of this population can read Chamor and understand Chamor, that disqualifies notice, effective notice, constructive notice, to 90% of the population, and again, defeats the whole reason why we're giving notice. So for me, Madam Speaker, if I could reserve a right to come back and...
I have no objections to that, Senator Espaldon.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome. On the Wampat amendment, that will, and if everyone for the record could note just that, that subsection 706 official language is one GCA. I do have Frank Uggan, Tom, oh, Tom Ada and Frank Bloss on the speaker amendment. Senator Uggan?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, initially, taking a look at the language, you know, from my perspective, I would certainly be supportive and advocate for everything to be in Chamor. But the reality is that the previous speaker had shared with us a concern, anytime that we provide public notification or meeting information coming from the government of Guam and our public entities, obviously, we want to ensure that everyone understands exactly what is transpiring and when these particular events are taking place. So that is, I share somewhat of a concern there, but I was wondering, Madam Speaker, as a, from a perspective and for the nature, for the sake of consistency, why not just use the same language that has already been accepted by the members of this body in subsection C on page two, where it shall be issued and printed first in Chamor or in Chamor first, and then translated into English? By virtue of utilizing that particular language, at least it incorporates the intent, my understanding is, of making sure that there's a continued promotion and use of the Chamor in any presentation by the government of Guam agencies. So that would be my suggestion, because I do have a heartache in terms of looking at this and saying, okay, I'm caught in a dilemma. Chamor presentation, Chamor presentation, will that maximize the exposure and the reading of many of our people here on our island and the understanding, or should we go with what the language right now is in subsection C on page two? That would require that it be in Chamor first and then subsequently in English so that in fact, everyone is included in the notification. So that, that is a concern that I did have at the beginning when this amendment was proffered, Madam Speaker, and I think that I shared the sentiments of the previous speaker, is that certainly when you look at public notifications from government of Guam entities or public entities, we want to ensure that the entire community understands what is being presented, and of course, by virtue of possibly looking at adopting the similar language that we have in subsection C, that may address the concern of the sponsor of this particular amendment. So I wanted to share that perspective, otherwise I would have a heartache or some slight concerns in terms of looking at this amendment and just accepting a card block. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Uggan. With that being said, I'm going to go ahead and take a one-minute recess so that we can probably come to a collaboration on this amendment and work it out. This committee, this legislature's back in session. I'm going to go ahead and recognize Speaker Wampat again. (speaking Spanish) Madam Speaker. I guess this is, this must be the day of withdrawals. And I don't want to impede, of course, the progression of this bill. It really is a very good bill. It's a start for us to really start to get ourselves, and I included, and others, to start to read, you know, Chamor, because although we may be able to speak it, it doesn't necessarily mean we can actually read it. It's a lot more difficult. But I think it's something that we really need to talk about later and have more dialogue, you know, and that's, and the speaker, the prior speaker from Jonia had actually talked about, you know, an immersion type of program, and when I heard him say that, that was the reason why I decided to put this amendment together, because it would, it's, so to speak, a total immersion for the community when you put in and write, you know, the announcement strictly in Chamor. And, but I guess, you know, we're not quite, you know, ready for that, and gosh, if we're not, then how can we even be ready to even start a total immersion Chamor language, you know, charter school? So, and I was really looking forward so much to actually having that, because even if it's kind of late, I guess, maybe for some of us, you know, kind of hard to teach, you know, old dogs, you know, new tricks, and, but the young children definitely are the ideal, ideal age to teach the language, too. And so there's definitely hope for them, so. (speaking Spanish). Okay. (speaking Spanish). Okay, on the motion to withdraw the amendment, if there's no objection, motion carries. I know that it's already quarter after five, but I'm going to go ahead and see if we can close on this bill today, and I'm going to say, Senator Espaldon, do you wish to speak on the bill, on the main motion, on the main bill and Tony Ada?
Yes, Madam Speaker. Thank you. Madam Speaker, it'd be hard not to stand in support of this bill. Chamor is a beautiful language. The Chamor language is a beautiful language, and it should be spoken more, and it should be more exposed more to our population and especially our children. I've always been impressed when I've gone abroad and, you know, during my term as senator, I've had the privilege of going to American Samoa as part of the APIL, and I was very impressed when, at every event that they had, the speeches were first spoken in their native tongue, and then followed by the English translation. When we went to the meeting in Hawaii, right, again, I believe you were there along with the speaker, very impressed, because there was a big movement, again, to teach the younger generation, the young kids, the Hawaiian language. We, you know, and throughout Micronesia, the same resurrection of the culture is going on, the reinforcement of the language, and yes, that has to happen on this island. It's important, it's essential going forward. However, when we start looking, and so all that, all my colleagues have spoken about and all the virtues about of this particular legislation hold true. It is important, this legislation. However, I guess what bothers me, not that I won't, not that I'm not going to vote for this, because I will, but what bothers me is that we have not yet really discussed the logistics behind it. I mean, even in terms of some of the technical announcements that might come out because of this, I mean, there are going to be so many meetings going forward because of the build-out that's coming, whether we'll be able to get out an announcement in a timely fashion has not really been discussed. Whether we will be giving any more money to any of the agencies to be able to perhaps nurture and to train in-house capabilities in Chamor language has not been discussed. There are several things, I think, that we have not discussed, and it bothers me to an extent that we might be passing something that really we know is good for our island but have not really put all the ingredients in to make it very effective. It's like saying we want to build a cake, the best bake a cake, best cake, and, you know, with all the toppings and whatnot, and yet we haven't discussed what kind of ingredients we're going to put into this to make that happen, and that concerns me. However, like I said, I understand the gist of this thing. I caution us to at least think about going forward, that we might want to make some amendments or perhaps new legislation that will support this particular bill and any other bill or perhaps new legislation that will support this particular bill and any other bill that comes forth in the future which would support the resurrection and the strengthening of the Chamorro language. Because, yes, while the intent is good and while that definitely is a good goal to strive for in terms of bringing the language back and making it more part of the conversant nature and environment of our island, we have to make sure that the resources to make that happen are behind it. And we have not talked about that. But that being said, I stand in support of this right now, do have some reservations in terms of when we can effectively implement this or if we can implement this without any real snafus. But again, Madam Speaker, I do believe in the language and I do believe in the resurrection and the perpetuation of the Chamorro language, so I would have to stand in support of this. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sisusmasi, Senator Espaldon. Senator VA, Tonyada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, I'd like to thank my colleague from Tumuning, the good senator from Tumuning. You know, he did bring up a lot of points about how are we going to truly effectuate such a bill like this that would be able to perpetuate our language further? And with, even with just our, just within us in our body here, we have some of us that can speak the language very well, some of us that can't speak the language very well. But I think any, any positive step forward, whether it be small steps or large steps, I think, especially when it enhances our culture, our language and our people, I think is a good step. Like the good senator from Baragada mentioned about the CNMI, one day I hope that our children will be able to be at that point in time where they'll be the ones to perpetuate the Chamorro language. And I'd like to thank my colleague, Senator Frank Blas, for allowing me to be the co-sponsor in this bill, and I hope that all of my colleagues here and the speaker support this. Thank you.
Bon provence, Senator Ada. My brother from Baragada.
Madam Speaker, for such a simple bill, took us almost three hours. But I sat back in amazement because for three hours, we talked about something that in 1952, we were instructed not to use. When our government, our civilian government was first formed, we were told we were prohibited from using our language. You and I grew up in the era where our mouths were washed out in soap if we used our language. And now, in the three hours, you know, a lot of the discussion was on whether or not, you know, are we going to offend anybody if we use O versus U because of our appling Yet, we don't have a problem with our broken English. We're concerned about whether or not we're going to get the message across. Sometimes, we don't even get it across in the language I'm speaking right now. But we try. We continue to talk about it until we understand. We are patient with each other. We make sure that before we take the next step, everybody knows what we're talking about. That is our culture. So, I thank all of my colleagues for taking the time and discussing and airing their concerns. Yes, you know, there is concerns, logistical concerns and any monetary concerns as to how this is going to happen. Is there going to be a price to this? Sure. But what price are we going to pay if we lose it? Well, how much money are we going to spend when it's gone to try to get it back? Now, I wish and I was, I never, it was never my intention to give any offense to the other ethnic backgrounds that live on our island, that call Guam home. But please, this is Guam. And please understand that in order to protect our island and to protect our people, to protect who we are, to protect the wonderful people that we are, we've got to take those little steps every once in a while and encourage them. You know, I stand proud, you know, when I go to an elementary school, especially when I go to, ever go to a Dodea school and see those kids there when they sing the fanoghi Chamorro? Or when they say the inefresi? And you know what? They say the inefresi and they don't have to pull out their cards like we do, some of us do. That's what we want to continue to perpetuate. And you know what, ladies and colleagues? There's going to be mistakes, there's going to be grammatical errors. I think that one time they said there was 200, 250,000 words in the English language, but there's only 5,000 in the Chamorro. So, we're going to make grammatical mistakes. But we're going to learn from those mistakes and we're going to get better at it. But you know what? We're not going to lose our language. Madam Speaker, before I close, I'd like to make just one final motion, and that is to include you as a third sponsor to this bill. And so, my motion, ma'am, is to include Tina Rose Munya Barnes as third and Telotide Guey as fourth sponsor.
State your point of information, Speaker Wampat.
Madam Speaker, I think it's really important that we clarify some things here. One is Chamorro is the official language of Guam. And English, you know, was later on then through legislation that we said that we want to make English now the spoken language also by the Chamoros. But make no mistake, that Chamorro is the official language.
Speaker, I thank you for that comment and you are right. Chamorro is the official language for this island of Guam. My brother Frank, Senator Blas.
So, along with motion, ma'am, you're third and Telot fourth and Judy Gauthier's fifth.
On that motion of, without any objections? And then Senator Ada? Okay. Senator Ada, there are no objections to be after that? No objections?
So, Madam Speaker, with that, I ask my colleagues for their support. I thank my colleagues for all the discourse that we had. It's a, I believe, as a result of the discourse, it made this legislation the much, much, much greater. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Now, I move down to third.
Okay. There's a motion to exclude Senator Pangolinan, Speaker Pangolinan, on the engrossment of the bill.
Madam Speaker, I think that's presumptuous in the part that-
Okay. With that being said, thank you, Senator Blas.
Time out. Can I ask for a one-minute recess?
We're going to go ahead and have a one-minute recess. This legislature's back in session. We're going to go ahead and take a recess. It's already at 5:30 and we'll come back tomorrow at 9 o'clock. No, 9 o'clock AM, tomorrow standard time, where America's Day begins.